Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. All right, it is six o'clock and it is time to call to order this special budget session for Randolph County Board of Commissioners and a big night of presentations from the various departments in the county relative to their budget request. And I'm sure all of them are very happy with it, so it shouldn't take very long, but I know they all want to present and it is a serious process and I don't want to make light of it, but it is a chance for us to hear from all the departments and if they do like their budget, that's all they need to say. But I know there are several requests and personnel in particular that was not included in this budget and I'm sure that we'll hear about that tonight. So we want to get started. Again, thank all of you for being here. I see a lot of our departments here. We are again streaming live, Facebook, YouTube, and those that are watching from home, we thank you for participating in this process as well. So with that, we're going to start with Human Resources and Jill Williams.
Good evening Chairman Frye and members of the board. So I grew up knowing that I was expected to do well in school, then when I graduated, I was expected to get a job. Now, many of us were raised to believe that getting a job in government with good benefits and retirement after 30 years was the way to go or the golden ticket. I didn't know that. I did not think that, but ironically, my first job out of college was with the Department of Social Services in the Quimby Program. MQB, we have some Quimby folks back there. That is a Medicaid program that helps elderly adults that are on Medicare pay for their Medicare premiums. And it was after I started with that program that I realized just how much, how valuable your benefits are with county government, that you have health insurance and a retirement pension typically after 30 years of service. But I can honestly say when I started with the Department of Social Services that I did not realize the impact that working for county or for social services would have. Back in 1988, the Medicare Part B premium was $24.80 and I looked it up and today it's $164.90, but that might seem like a small amount, but I know to those that were living on a fixed income, that $24.80 made a difference. I also looked at what the cost of a gallon of gas was back in 1988. It was 90 cents, so they could fill up their car and then have some left over by getting their premiums paid for. But over time, I also learned that working for the county government is more than just a job. It's an opportunity to help our neighbors, friends and family with services offered by county government. We can help people navigate services and processes that can be very confusing, but because we work with them and do them day in and day out, they're simpler for us. We understand them. But many services offered by the county are mandated by statute, so citizens must come to us for services. And when they come, we in turn must have qualified staff filling those positions to provide the services required. So this is where I might sound like a broken record, but as I've shared with you all year after year, county employees are very easily marketable in other private and public sector jobs. I was speaking with someone earlier today and that's what they said, it's not necessarily other government job, but private sector, especially for medical staff. At the start of the 2223 fiscal year, we had about 941 full-time and part-time positions and of those positions, 86% require some type of advanced education, specialized certifications or specialized pre-employment work experience. Randolph County strives to offer competitive salaries and generous benefits, including that retirement pension, that 30-year retirement pension. However, the market for talent is very competitive and qualified staff are in limited supply. Employees have options. Today's workforce is very mobile and remote work options, even hybrid options, allow people more flexibility about where and how they will work. Furthermore, today's staff are looking for opportunity to grow and develop in their jobs. Unfortunately, due to this competitive market, our employee separations have continued to increase. There were approximately 228 employee separations in 2022, up from 194 separations in 2021. In previous years, I've provided turnover rates to you. Starting now and going forward, I will provide what we call retention rates. The retention rate is the rate of employees staying while the turnover rate is the rate at which employees leave. The employee retention rate for 2022 was almost 75%. We can do better. Not only is turnover costly, but there's lost efficiency in the delivery of services as well as stress on remaining staff because of increased job duties. Understanding the retention rate will help us understand employee engagement and ways that we can retain a stable workforce. Randolph County recognizes the importance of engaging our employees and soliciting employee feedback. An Employee Recruitment and Retention Strategies Committee has been formed and it consists of employee representation from across county government. This committee sponsored the Employee Engagement Survey, which just closed this past week on June the 2nd. 509 employees completed the survey, which is 55% of staff that were on payroll as of May 31st. But if you break this down even further, almost 65% of our full-time staff completed the survey and I think this shows a very high level of engagement from county employees. While the results of this survey are still under review, here's a screenshot of one of the 20 questions that was asked of employees. What attributes in an employer are most important to me? 472 employees responded to this question and the top five are competitive salary, longevity, supportive leadership and management, insurance wellness and retirement benefits. Over to the right, you'll see number one and top three. That first column is how many employees selected that response or that attribute as their number one choice and the second column shows how many employees chose that attribute as one of their top three choices. The county's recommendations for the 202324 fiscal year are targeted at retaining staff and these strategies align with input provided from the Employee Engagement Survey. In addition to the recommendation for a 5% cost of living adjustment, the county approved a market study of pressure point positions and is recommending the implementation of proficiency pay. Again, the goal of these strategies is to help ensure that the county retains valued employees and their institutional knowledge. Piedmont Tribe Regional Council is still reviewing the market study data. They've pulled the data for those pressure point positions. There are over 500 positions included in the study. No specific recommendations have been made at this time, but the preliminary results show that approximately 80% of the positions appear to match the market entry percentage and that would be our base rate or entry level and also 80% appear to match the market average, which is where employees move to in the salary ranges. The concept of proficiency pay is that as an employee develops job competency and understanding of their role in the organization and is consistently contributing value, then they will progress through the pay range. An employee who has progressed through the pay range is expected to then contribute greater value at a higher level of performance. There's 1% between each step, so each step advancement is a 1% increase in pay. Any step increase or advancement through the pay range is contingent upon the employee meeting or exceeding work expectations. So in this screenshot, this shows how an employee, a new employee who meets minimum would move through the range in five years. So they would start at base, after six months of employment, they would move to step six, which is 6%. After additional six months, they would move to step nine, which is an additional 3%. And then after a year or two years on the job, they would move another 3% to step 12. And after reaching step 12, for the next three years, they would advance two steps or 2% until they reach step 18 in five years. Current staff who are on step 7, 12 to 17, will also receive step increases and those will be on their next review or performance evaluation date. For example, an employee who's currently at step 12 will move to step 14 on their next evaluation date. An employee who's on step 15 will move to step 17, which is a 2% increase. And an employee who's at step 17 would move to step 18 or 1%. Again, all of this is contingent upon meeting or exceeding expectations. An employee will be eligible for merit after they've achieved step 18 and been at this step for one year. And merit is a limited commodity. There is only a limited amount of merit, but with the proficiency pay plan, this should allow greater flexibility and opportunity in the merit program. There are approximately 100 full-time employees who are above, who are at or above step 18, so the proficiency pay program will impact approximately 80 to 90% of our full-time staff. It has a very big impact. The third most important attribute for staff on the Employee Engagement Survey is supportive leadership and management. And in addition to the leadership initiatives that departments have implemented within their departments, the county launched the Randolph County Leadership Academy in April of this year. The academy includes employees from all across county government and from frontline employees to senior managers. 13 employees were selected for the program. They went through a vigorous screening process, serious but not too serious. We want people to keep applying. It included a formal application process, a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, and a letter of recommendation. And this group is expected to graduate in March of 2024. Additionally, the county contributes, continues to sponsor department heads and senior managers in the NAECO High Performance Leadership Academy and approximately 20 staff have graduated from that program. I don't have a slide on wellness initiatives, but as you know, those are very strong and vibrant in Randolph County and plans are underway for an employee onsite employee wellness clinic in the upcoming fiscal year. A couple of additional considerations based on the Employee Engagement Survey and just considerations in general for employee recognition and retention are 401K and longevity. Retirement benefits was number five in the Employee Engagement Survey. This is a screenshot, this is snapshot, I guess, from the School of Government, the 2022 School of Government data. 81 counties participated and of those counties, 56 offer a 401K that does not require an employee match. And I just listed some of the counties that we're familiar with, you know, Chatham, 5%, Davidson, 1.5%, Guilford, 5%, Montgomery, 5%. Moore is 1.5% for the first three years, then 3% and Rowan at 3%. And as you all know, Randolph County offers up to a 2% match for non-sworn employees. Another consideration, looking at the data from our Employee Engagement Survey, is longevity. That was a number two attribute that employees feel they would value. Of the counties that participated in the School of Government Survey, 66 reported having some type of longevity plan. I will clarify Davidson counties. It says they start with $35 at three years. That's $35 per year. So if you've been with them three years, you would get $105 and it increases thereafter. This slide is a snapshot of the cost of living and market adjustments that have been afforded to county employees for the past 10 years and of course, 5% is the recommendation for 2023. So what happens in a 30-year career, in a 30-year work span? Careers are made, skills are learned and developed, professional and personal relationships are formed. Often, we spend more time during the week with our coworkers than we do with our own family and friends. We experience life events with our coworkers, births and deaths, birthdays, graduations and biometric screenings and more. And yes, biometric screenings is a life event. A community or sense of community is created, both professional and personal. Randolph County employees want to work in their communities. They want to serve their neighbors, families and friends and make a positive impact. Employees want competitive salaries, supportive management leadership and growth and development opportunities. So what will be the impact of the proposed strategies? A 5% COLA has been recommended, excuse me, recommended along with proficiency pay, implementation of recommendations from the Market Study of Pressure Point Positions and continuing support of leadership development and wellness initiatives. The Recruitment and Retention Strategies Committee will continue to meet and employee feedback will continue to be solicited and considered. Our hope is that all of these strategies will demonstrate the county's support of staff and as a result, will increase our retention rate. Thank you. Do you all have any questions?
Questions?
Thorough presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Sheriff's Department?
I'll be quick. While it wasn't everything we requested, we're satisfied with the proposed budget for our agency. Thank you.
Did the sheriff know you'd want to do that? All right. Emergency Services Donovan? I'm sure he'll appreciate the time.
Good evening Commissioners. A year ago, just prior to the adoption of the current budget, Chief Davis and I stood before you and explained an increasingly dire situation that our emergency services department was facing. On our worst days, up to three of our nine ambulances sat empty in the bay because we didn't have the people to staff them. Our 911 center had to stop monitoring the municipal police channel and we asked officers in our smaller jurisdictions to share a dispatch channel with the sheriff's office. We had some dedicated staff working 70 to 90 hours per week just to maintain minimum staffing levels. We mentioned that if there was a silver bullet to fix our problems, we didn't know exactly what it was. It would likely be a combination of things over time to return our department to the staffing levels needed to stop the backward slide and reduction in services. In the 2223 budget, you approved several measures, including a COLA and additional merit funding to reward employees that had stuck with us through COVID. Our hourly employees were allowed to sell back their holiday time they had accrued for working county holidays for cash. That would normally be time they could use to take off work, but we were consistently having to deny time off due to our low staffing. I'm happy to report that we noticed some improvement in our department. I honestly believe employee morale has increased since our last year and we haven't had to shut down an ambulance since, I'm sorry, December 9th of 2022. Many surrounding counties can't say the same, so thank you. But we do still have a lot of work to do. For the past year, our goal has been to fill the many vacant positions in our department. Sometimes that feels like pouring water into a bucket with holes. We strongly believe if we can get back to full staff, it will take away much of the stress, workload, excessive overtime and decrease the burnout of our staff. We just have trouble getting there because of turnover. Some of our budget requests this year are designed to plug some of these holes. Some of the biggest holes that we're seeing in our department is in the 911 division. In the last budget year, you approved eight new, much-needed positions in the 911 center, which bumped our allocation from 30 to 38 employees. The blue line at the top of the graph is the allocated positions in the 911 center. The dotted gray line is the total number of full-time staff allocated in that division. As you can see, since the new positions were approved, we haven't been able to increase our overall staffing in the last year. The green vertical bars at the bottom of the chart show the number of new employees hired in a particular month, while the gray vertical bars indicate full-time employees that resigned. With this turnover rate and the length of time it takes to train new employees, you can see that we haven't made much forward progress. As we try to steadily add staff, we have other staff choosing employment elsewhere. What's more concerning to me is the yellow line, which shows the number of full-time employees that are trained to do the job working in 911. The blue line at the bottom are full-time employees still in training. We lost nearly 60 years of experience in the past year and replacing it has been very difficult. To plug some of these holes and slow the turnover rate in our department of 911, we believe that a night shift differential or night shift incentive pay would help. Many industries that work 24-hour shifts offer an incentive to employees who work the non-standard hours. Our local hospital does, most nursing homes, Georgia Pacific, Tempken, Energizer, just to name a few. Our employees earn the same hourly rate whether they work days or nights. In terms of turnover, as of today, of the nine full-time employees we lost in the past year, one was a retirement and eight voluntarily resigned. Seven of the eight employees that resigned were assigned to night shift. In fact, one full-time employee assigned to a peak shift resigned without notice just one day after we asked them to move to night shift because we had a critical vacancy. We believe that offering a night shift pay differential will entice some employees to work non-standard hours. Although we have employees in both our EMS and 911 divisions assigned to permanent night shifts and would like to eventually offer this incentive to both of our divisions, as a cost-saving measure, we are only proposing to offer this to 911 employees this time as we have the highest turnover rate on night shift in that division. We are requesting a 10% increase in hourly pay for employees who are permanently assigned to night shift rotation. This is in line with state employees who work overnight and slightly above some of our surrounding counties what they offer as an incentive. In our current pay plan, if we were fully staffed and all employees were at a standard grade, we estimate this would cost approximately $108,000 in salary and benefits. With today's staffing levels, it would increase our costs by about $66,000. Hopefully slowing the excessive turnover rate in our 911 division would offset that cost to a degree. One statistic that really stood out to me was our new employee turnover cost. In the last year, we paid over $45,000 in salary to new employees whose employment ended before they ever finished their training. That's $45,000 in a division with less than 30 people that was paid out to employees that we never got the benefit of a single day of independent work from. Another program we have requested to implement is a paramedic academy. Starting this program would help the volume that we could be adding to our bucket. One of the most positive things that has happened to our EMS service in the past year was the graduation of 13 of our EMTs to paramedics from Randolph Community College. As you can see on the graph indicated by the orange dash line, we need about 44 full-time paramedics to be able to fully staff our ambulances. Historically, we have been below that number, which means paramedics had to pick up extra shifts each week to staff our trucks. In August of 2021, 13 of our employees started the RCC paramedic program and graduated in November of 2022, which gave us a grand total of 49 paramedics. After the graduation, not only have we not shut down an ambulance since, we occasionally staffed double medic trucks, which means instead of an EMT and paramedic working on the truck, we had two paramedics. That was a huge accomplishment that was nearly unthinkable just 18 months ago. We feel that we must keep this positive momentum going. As you can see by the green paramedic line on the graph, since the November 22 graduation, we have seen a few paramedics already attritioned to other jobs and others to nursing school. Without starting the next group of EMTs to start paramedic school, we predict that within the next year, we will be relying on our employees to continue to pick up extra shifts to keep our ambulances staffed. It's more water leaving our bucket. Unfortunately, as some of you know, Randolph Community College has been thus far unwilling to repeat the program that gave us so much success. As of today, the next program is not scheduled to begin till September of this year and is scheduled to be in a longer 18-month program. The core schedule they're offering isn't the most conducive to our employees' work schedule, which is why we have not had employees sign up previously. They would have to take off one day every week for 18 months to be able to attend the class. Even if we could accommodate some of our employees in that class, we won't see the benefit of that till the spring of 2025. A solution to that problem we have been researching would be to mimic what the fire service and law enforcement has been doing for years, offer an in-house academy. A paramedic academy would allow us to take 10 of our EMTs off the ambulance and put them into our own classroom. We would need to hire a full-time instructor to teach the program and backfill 10 more EMTs to work on the ambulance while the others were in class. In this accelerated program, we could potentially produce 10 more paramedics in an eight-to-nine month program rather than a 15-month program that helped turn our service around last November. Although this is a costly investment, it creates more of a sustainable approach by investing in our own employees, in their training to do the job that we need them to do. They can dedicate their time to paramedic training and become certified much quicker than what we are used to. This concept is already in place by several of our surrounding counties. We anticipate the cost with a full-time instructor and a maximum of 10 students to be about $382,000. Although if this program is successful, that cost would begin to decrease as the next class may not require the full 10 employees and the program is not expected to last an entire budget year. Chief Davis has prepared some of the other statistics and we'll talk about a couple of other needs in our department.
Thank you. So I'm just going to go through our others. He didn't show you all his fancy little dots moving around, but as Jared said, the budget, if we look at the paramedic academy, we're going to be able to produce paramedics much quicker than we ever have in the past. The problem today is, a few years ago, paramedics could only work on an ambulance. Now they can work in the ER, they can work in a doctor's office, a clinic, a dialysis, they can work anywhere with their certification. So now we're competing with these other agencies. We have at least five that we know of that are currently in nursing school that want to advance into that field. to advance into that field that are paramedics. So we know there, there's five we're going to lose that are seasoned paramedics. So this is our somewhat solution to at least guarantee that we have sufficient levels to respond to the needs of our citizens over the course of the next couple of years. And as Jared said, we'll review it at the end of the year. It's going to take a lot less time if we do it, and then we will bring it back to you if we need to do something different, or we'll simply go about doing our regular training as normal. If we talk about EMS, call volume has increased significantly since the last time we added an ambulance into our daily operations, and that was in 2017 when we added the ambulance at the ERIC base near Coal Ridge. You can see there that we're currently about 3,700 more calls than we were in 2017, and we're on the road to a lot more even this year. We had the biggest significant uptick between 2020 and 2021, and surprisingly, that was not necessarily COVID-related. That was natures of all kinds, chest pains, strokes, et cetera. Here you can see for EMS, our busiest day is on a Saturday, and Monday is the next busiest day and goes all the way down. Here's our busiest hours, which are 10:00 to 10:00, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So you can see there that in this 365-day period, we transported 17,000 patients, and mostly between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. So, what I'm asking, let me review this real quick. Here's where our ambulances currently sit. So you have one in Archdale, Trinity, Randawin, Liberty, Ramsour, two in Ashboro, one in Uari, and one in ERIC. What we're asking for in the EMS Division is four new paramedic positions and four field training officer positions, and with those eight positions, I'll be able to add two more trucks in the Archdale and Randawin districts, and they are our busiest districts. And we already have the accommodations at the Archdale Base and the Randawin Base to hold another truck. But if you look here with the green ambulances, this is where we think we're headed for the future: one in Climax, one somewhere down in the Farmer, and I put "ish" area because we would have to narrow that down, a third ambulance in the Ashboro area, and then one maybe around in Grantville, to have the spatial coverage that we will need in the future with all the development, especially what we see that's being developed for residents in Ashboro, just Ashboro alone. And we don't know still what is going to happen up in Liberty or the Julian or Climax areas. So ambulance availability, almost daily now we run out. We come to a point in the day during those peak hours where if 911 rings that 10th time, we don't have a paramedic ambulance to send. So we either need to divert an ambulance on the way to a lesser acuity call and make that patient wait, or we call a surrounding county to assist, and the other counties do the same with us. You can see there in the surrounding counties, we responded for them 358 times since July 1st, 2022. So that means we stood by for Montgomery or Davidson, and they're doing the same thing for us. So again, the positions in the EMS that we're requesting, and you have this on your summary sheet that I provided, is four paramedics. That would be a cost of $310,548, that includes benefits. And the four field training officers would be $323,980 with benefits. The other critical position that we think that we need starting in January is an additional fire inspector. So you approved the Fire Plans Examiner, and that position has worked out better than we could have hoped. The Fire Plan Examiner, Mike Pittman, is doing a great job. You wouldn't believe the plans that he's having to go through with the zoo expansion and the Toyota site. Toyota is mostly taking up its time. We learned today we're going to have to go back out to the zoo for more blasting, so we have to keep a fire inspector out there for that, and we're going to have to keep a fire inspector up at the Toyota site as long as they continue to do blasting up there. So what that creates is a fall to our normal duties of inspecting businesses, schools, and churches across the county, not only for the county, but for the municipalities that pay us to provide that service for them. So that position, we are requesting a fire inspector III to start January 1st. The cost for those six months would be $43,652 with benefits. It could be less if we don't find a fire inspector III and have to go with a I or a II, which is probably what we expect will happen, but that would be the total cost for those six months. Another position that we're requesting, we've requested this position and these other positions for several years, and I kind of bring it back to what Dr. Ganey said the other night, where if I just bring you something one time where we really, did we really need it, or were we just shopping to see if we could get something nice? But these positions, we have requested for the last several years, and that is an Assistant Director. The reason for this is we now have to, in July, we're going to be starting Medicare Cost Reporting. It's a requirement, it's going to be a two-year project that we have to participate in, and if we don't, we lose 10% of our revenue right out the gate. It's a very important project that Jared and I are struggling already to try to get kicked off. The other thing is Medicaid contracts, which we now have to contract with brokers for EMS transports that are convalescent or non-emergent. We have to contract with different insurance companies like Blue Cross and Blue Shield, United, and all of the big players, and that's something we've never had to do in the past. So those contracts take up quite a bit of time. So we're looking for somebody that can focus on these important things and allow Jared and I to continue running our operations daily. It would be the third in command for the department, and for six months, the pay would be $50,287, just for your consideration. Same thing for, if we do that, I would like to reclassify the Deputy Director position up to a II-27 from a II-24, which is what the Assistant Director would be. Regardless, if we are not able to get that Assistant Director position, I still want to reclassify his position, so there's room for growth because he is doing a lot more. This is just kind of a summary of how our department is set up, just for you to see that right now Jared is kind of focusing on everything, Jared and I are focusing on all of those things listed in yellow, and it would allow us to separate it if we have an Assistant Director. The right-hand side shows you what the department would look like if we added all of the positions we requested, and then the final would show you, it would show you if we added the academy, what the total number of positions would be. And again, that 224 positions would go down by 10 at the completion of the Paramedic Academy. Once they graduate, they will be reabsorbed into existing positions. Here's the summary that you have in front of you for you to consider. Our request for the upcoming budget, and if we add the eight positions, I will also need two cardiac monitors and two Lucas devices, which is additional capital of $140,000, only if we are able to get those eight paramedic positions. So if you have any questions?
What was the amount on the reclassification? $5,000?
It was like, it was less than 6, it was like $5,900. I've got it in my notes, a bit quicker on the slides. $5,939. Any questions? Happy news.
Donovan, I know you said the paramedics, the reasons they were leaving. For the 911 folks, what's the reason?
So everybody that's left in the 911 Center has cited pay. One was a supervisor who went to High Point, starting out the gate as a basic telecommunicator and making significantly more, and she showed us a copy of their longevity plan, you know, and she'll be making 80-some thousand in the next three years, and that's nowhere near what a telecommunicator is. We've had telecommunicators go work. As Jill mentioned, you know, the skill sets that county positions have are very attractive to the private, just like the paramedics now. They can go work in a doctor's office, the doctor can pay them less than a nurse, but more than what they're making for us, and get more skill sets for innovation, you know, all these different types of skills they're allowed to do under standard protocols, to where a nurse has to have a doctor's order or additional special training for one particular skill set. So we're just, we've never had to compete like this before. The organizational skills and the split ear and all of those, you know, things that a telecommunicator brings, they're highly attractive. One left to work in a call center at a furniture factory, making $3 more starting and a guarantee of an increase throughout the years. Then we had one who Jared mentioned that we asked, told her that she would have to go to night shift for a critical vacancy to fill that for a while, turned her notice in, and within two days or three days, she had gotten a stay-at-home job starting at $23 an hour, and she's telling all of our folks, "I don't have to work holidays, weekends, inclement weather, y'all should come work over here." So it's a competition all the way around. Any other questions? Thanks for what you do.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yes.
Tracy? Social Services, Tracy?
Good evening. Thank you for your time and attention this morning, this evening, just listening to all of my colleagues. Public service is not for the faint of heart, is it? I don't envy you your positions tonight. I am here to represent Department of Social Services and the work that we do, and I'm so excited. I look behind me, and I see many of my coworkers back there, and I'd like them to stand and be recognized for the fabulous work that they do and the excellence that they bring to Department of Social Services every day. Stand up, everybody. Great. Thank you for coming. So happy to see you. Thank you for that. Tonight, I want to share just very briefly some information about the work at Department of Social Services, our challenges, our successes, and a little information about Medicaid expansion, as I know of it today. First and foremost, our goal is to enhance service delivery to better meet the evolving needs of our community. I have come before you in past fiscal years asking for investment in child welfare. I am very happy to report, I am not asking for anything for child welfare tonight, and that is because the past investments that you have allowed us to make have certainly paid dividends. We have workforce issues, as everyone else does, but I can truly say that the numbers of youth that we have coming into foster care, although they haven't decreased, they aren't continuing to increase. The services that we provide for families continue to be complex, but based on some of the investments that we've made in the past, particularly something that's been very, very helpful to our families and children has been our social work trainee program that helps us to better serve the needs of families and children. So thank you for that already. Today, we're going to be talking about our need for income maintenance caseworker positions. Our key priority is maintaining our current mandatory services and meeting or exceeding our performance measures and preparing for Medicaid expansion to support our current workforce. Where do people see it within the structure of Department of Social Services? As you see, income maintenance, Medicaid has a large portion of staff members, as does child placement and adult services, and that is our foster care team. Where does the funding come from for the Department of Social Services? I'm going to be talking primarily about income maintenance this evening, so I want you to understand about the funding structure. For income maintenance caseworkers that are determining food nutrition services, they are reimbursed at the federal level of 50%. For those staff members that are determining Medicaid, that's reimbursed at 75% currently. One of our important performance indicators for Department of Social Services is ensuring that the work of our staff is at least 50% reimbursable. So for Department of Social Services' $22 million budget, at least half of it, we worked really hard to have reimbursed, and that is through and by the work of our team members and completing those day sheets, which they have told me they love. I have to be honest, last year, when we were having budget talks, our staff members encouraged me to seek income maintenance caseworker positions at that time, and they know I'm a numbers nerd, so they brought their graphs and their numbers, and they told me the current trajectory of the uptick in cases would mean that we aren't meeting performance measures in the future. And I decided to wait. I thought that with the COVID unwinding and people getting back to work and the community opening back up, some of those folks who were currently on Medicaid would decrease, and possibly some of those citizens who are receiving food nutrition services would also decrease. Well, I have to tell you, my staff were right, and this year, I am asking for the five income maintenance caseworker positions that they asked me for last year. As you see from this slide, around year 2019 and '20, we had 40,000 individuals that were receiving Medicaid benefits. Today, that number is in excess of 46,000, and for food nutrition services, we had 19,000 around the year 1920, and today, we have in excess of 26,000 citizens who are receiving food nutrition services benefits. My team asked last year, and I said no. I'm very fortunate that they continue to allow me to be their leader after that. So one of the things that we are looking at in challenging is, I'm sorry, the Medicaid positions that I'm asking for this year, one position along with fringe benefits is $57,000. Again, we hope to have about 50% of that reimbursed from federal funds. Anytime that I am speaking in public recently, I try and make a point of pointing out this Medicaid challenge. At a time when Session Law 2023-7, which is the Medicaid Expansion Bill, has already been signed into law, so we're talking about Medicaid expansion and trying to prepare our minds and our hearts and our staff for what that's going to look like in the future. During that same time, there is no Medicaid manual, no integrated Medicaid manual, that new team members can look to where all of that policy is in one place. North Carolina has been talking about Medicaid expansion for many years. Since 2010, some people, it's been a possibility for us, but for North Carolina, around 500 to 600,000 citizens are going to be newly eligible, and for Randolph County, 12,000 to 14,000 new citizens will be newly eligible for Medicaid. During that time, we will have to build up and train a staff to do Medicaid, and there's no integrated policy manual. Our staff are forced to look in several different places for that policy, and consequences of not getting it right could mean a payback for the county, and that is unacceptable to you and also to me. So I put this one in here because if you ever get an opportunity to mention a challenge that we are facing with Medicaid expansion on the horizon, we need an integrated Medicaid policy manual. The second thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is, at the same time we're talking about Medicaid expansion, we're also discussing a decrease in Medicaid administrative funding dollars for Department of Social Services. And although while our staff are administering Medicaid within NCFAST to make sure people are eligible, activities outside of that can no longer be claimed at 75%. There was a reclassification that the federal government did last year, so many tasks that we used to do and bill for 75%, we can no longer do that. Some of those include training. In order to train people to do Medicaid, that is not specifically putting people into NCFAST for eligibility, can't be billed at 75% anymore. If we have a claim for fraud investigation for Medicaid, can't be billed at 75% anymore. Quality and training, postage for Medicaid recipients, travel, all of those things are now reclassified down from 75%. That results in a 315 That results in a $315,000 loss of revenue for Randolph County. It was effective this year, but the state held us harmless, meaning we didn't realize those decreased funding. They are also providing that funding, so we'll held harmless next year. But I wanted to bring it up because after next year, we will have that decrease in funding each year going forward, again, when we're talking about Medicaid expansion. So what Medicaid expansion monies have they told us are available today? I can tell you what I know. What I know is they have shared that we will receive that $315,000 for this coming fiscal year, beginning July 1, 2023. We'll receive that before the end of this month. We will also receive $117,000, which is the $23,000 and some odd dollars per month that is due to Randolph County for each month the Medicaid expansion is effective. I can also tell you that that's not all the funding that we'll receive. They are providing that money to us upfront because based on the session law, Medicaid expansion law that was approved, it is tied to the budget, and counties will not receive money even after the budget is approved, no sooner than October 1, 2023. They have also told us that once Medicaid, once the budget bill passes, Departments of Social Services will have either 60, 90, or 120 days to stand up, staff to take applications for the newly eligible. I don't know what to say about that because that could be well before October 1, right? So they're asking us to do something that we haven't actually received funding for. So the only thing that we know that we'll receive before the end of this month is that $117,000 and the $313,000 of hold harmless, which is not really for Medicaid expansion. Senate bill has outlined some clear monies to assist counties. The Senate budget provides for $40 million in reoccurring funds for counties and $8 million non-reoccurring in the first year to assist us. I don't know what portion of that is Randolph County's. It's also provided for $59 million reoccurring in year two. I don't know what portion of that is Randolph County's. But when we find out what portion belongs to Randolph County, it will take some substantial funding to stand up the 22 additional staff members that we will need to provide for the 12,000 to 14,000 newly eligible Medicaid citizens. Oops, I got excited there.
Go back to that.
Total cost for 22 additional staff members to render Medicaid, cost will be about $1.4 million, and with the cost share, ooh, sorry, with the cost share, we'll receive some of that money back, and that will cost the county $537,000 after we get our reimbursement. Hopefully, the monies that I outlined that's in the Senate bill, the 40 million, I am not touching that, that is not me, that is not me. With the 40 million reoccurring and 8 million non-reoccurring in year one, I would hope that that would cover that plus more. I promise I'm not touching, I'm just gonna put it down.
So the $1,474 plus the $537?
That's the total cost. See, I'm not touching it, it's right there. So the total cost would be 1.4 million, but we would get reimbursement, and the county cost, I'm not touching it, the county cost would be the $537,000.
We get reimbursement, roughly $900,000.
Yes, the cost would be about $900,000, right, reimbursement. Because for income maintenance caseworkers, their work is reimbursed at either 50% federal match or 75%. So based on the work that they do, we would get some of that monies back. So the total cost, the additional monies from, only from the county, county funds will be $537,000. And before I ask for questions, I wanted to mention Michael McKenzie is here. He and Crystal have assisted us so very much during the budget year. I asked for two budgets, one without Medicaid expansion and one with. When we started budgeting, we did not know the session law 2023-7 would pass. It did, but they did the very hard work of assisting us doing all that work, so I appreciate That's a lot, so questions?
I have one or two questions.
Okay.
You would probably expect. This is a lot, and it's not what you want it to be, but it's gonna be what you're gonna have to deal with, that's for sure. I've asked this question before, and I'll keep asking it, and I know what your answer's going to be, but I'll ask it anyway.
You can ask me whatever you want, except where I'm going to get 22 additional staff
I've asked it too many times, haven't I? Because there's 99 other counties gonna be doing the same thing.
Yes, some are bigger than we are.
Some are bigger than we are. Is there, is there any increase in people going into the field to help this situation?
To my knowledge, there are not an increase of income maintenance caseworkers out there. We're going to be creative in our recruitment. We have a great place to work with many benefits that I heard Ms. Williams prior to us, but with Department of Social Services, we have many other benefits of working in a very positive workplace with our own leadership academy and a positive leadership staff members, and I hope that some of that will pull people in. We have a hybrid work plan now where they can work from home also, as well as come into the office. So I hope some of those things would make Randolph County much more advantageous place to work.
So where will we find those 22, if we have 22, how many is Guilford gonna need? Is there a, is there a labor market trained out there for this?
Some years ago, the community colleges had training in NCFAST, but not really a training for income maintenance caseworkers. Income maintenance caseworker training truly lies with the counties. Nobody else does that. Not state.
For everybody else's education in mind, what is a requirement for a worker that you look for?
They have to have some experience in inputting data, medical transcriptionists, front office work, income maintenance caseworker ones, the positions that's in the budget, the five positions. They don't have to have a four-year degree. That, that's usually business people move over into income maintenance casework.
But a lot of your people have, have master's degrees.
They do.
This type of thing.
They do. They don't have to have that, though, that's not required. They don't have to have a four-year degree, that's not required for income maintenance caseworker.
The four-year degree's not?
It is not. Many of mine are four-year degreed, but it is not required.
Do you find that you really need people with four-year degrees?
I am going to be very, very honest, we find people of all spectrum that are capable of doing this work. It's tough. You have to be computer savvy, you have to be good with numbers, you have to have attention to detail, it's tough work, so we find people that are all into the spectrum.
And you have federal and state requirements coming down all the time, requiring paperwork and knowledge that these people have to know.
That's, that would be accurate.
And there's no real great place to go find that?
There's not.
Except experience.
Our community, we find it in our communities.
What would be the learning curve?
Learning curve? Great question, and I meant to mention that for Medicaid, it usually takes about six to nine months of training before they can independently process an application. And again, they are looking at half a dozen different places for where the policy is because there's no integrated manual. Our staff works really hard to make sure that they assist our new folks, but we, we have a plan for trying to train up and work with our people to make sure that we have what we need adequately to staff and train. So Medicaid expansion is not here. I am not asking for the 22 additional staff tonight, we don't know about monies, but I wanted you to be aware, so when we found out exactly what the monies looked like and I came back, I would just be here in front of you for five minutes.
Are you saying, are you saying the $537 is worst case?
Yes, absolutely. $537 is worst. That's, that's salary, benefits, et cetera. That's not just the salary, that's everything. $537 is worse. And I, I cannot imagine a reality in, in which every seat is going to be filled. That simply doesn't happen anymore. So 22 is what we need, I can't imagine any reality when we would have that, six, nine, you know, we're, we're not gonna have that immediately. So that number, of course, depends on how many people we're able to bring in, how many seats are filled, et cetera. But I also wanted to share this because there is going to be an influx of applications. We are not gonna be timely at 69 or 120 days after they pass the budget. We're not gonna be timely. I want our citizens to know that, and I want you to know that. We're going to be working just as hard and diligently as we can.
Each caseworker goes to court with their cases?
No, not income maintenance caseworkers. They, only our team, Program Integrity goes to court if there's a fraud case. Our income maintenance caseworkers primarily do not go to court.
Discuss a little bit about how much time is spent with court cases and this type of thing, how, how you have to work with the DA's office, for instance?
So for those fraud cases, it takes an innumerable amount of time. Again, we can't bill that at 75%, it's now 50. Combing through records, going to court, talking to witnesses, it takes a lot of time. Significant.
And experience?
And experience.
When you get new people, how do you get, how do they get experience, except on the job?
On the job.
I know you got 22 people, or six or nine, or wherever they might, where you gonna put them?
We have been working on where to put them. I told you not to ask me where I was gonna get to 22, but I forgot to tell you not to ask me where I was gonna put them. We have been working on that. Again, we have a hybrid remote work policy now, many staff members working from home, we're gonna do some office share. We have a new office over in North Gate, and if push come to shove, there's gonna be some additional open offices in the business continuity system, business continuity that I thought I could beg an officer to, we'll find the space.
Along with all the accoutrements that goes with it, the computers, all those kinds of things?
Right.
Have to go along with it.
Thank you for your time and attention this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very enlightening. Thank you, Tracy.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to start off this evening by expressing appreciation, appreciation for your ongoing support of our department, but especially of late, your support in allowing some of the ARPA funds that the county received to help us do a renovation to our department. Good news is, is that renovation is underway. A demolition began last week, and as anticipated, the project hopefully will be wrapped up within a year, so thank you again for that. And I'll just briefly mention that, just as a reminder for everybody, that some of the COVID funding that the department received, our department received, is gonna be part of that renovation, covering part of that renovation too for COVID-related issues that were identified. So that was, I'm just putting that out there as a, as a reminder. So to get to the topic at hand, we are pleased with our budget. The only funds that we're asking for are just funds to cover the increase in costs for employee health insurance coverage and for the increase in employee retirement. A couple other things I want to briefly mention is, if you recall back to the May Commissioners' Meeting, our department requested and you all approved the addition of a human services planner slash evaluator too. That position is not yet, it's not part of this budget, but will be added at the beginning of the fiscal year. And then the last thing about the, our budget is, I just want to touch on our appropriated fund balance, it's a little more than it usually is. Those funds that are in our appropriated fund balance are funds that will, are gonna be available to cover possibly some of the deficits that we'll have this, this year during our renovation, because during our renovation, it's a four-phase project, so there's gonna be points in time where like half of our clinic is gonna be inaccessible, so we're likely gonna see fewer clients, so that'll be a little less revenue coming in. But those funds can also be used to help us, you know, make any necessary purchases for equipment and maybe cover some things that might crop up during, during the renovation. And the last thing that I, I do want to mention is, I appreciate the work that Human Resources, Jill and her team do, but I do want to support the presentation that Jill put forward this evening, because our department, like many of, many others, have those pressure point positions, and I know you all have laid, I've been bringing it to you all's attention about our environmental health specialist positions. Specifically, we have other pressure point positions in our department, but right now are, the ones we're struggling with the most are environmental health specialist positions because there's not enough of them to go around across the state to do and complete the workload demand that's out there. So any steps that can be taken to take care of our folks, especially the ones that have been here a long time, the two that we're getting ready to lose have 22-plus years of experience, and like some of my colleagues have already said, there's other counties that are offering higher salaries and they're being wooed away. So there are, you know, we value our team members and we hate to see them go, but understand that, you know, when you're offered a 26, 27% increase or a 37% increase, it's hard to say no. So anyway, I just want to put that shout out there to anything we can do to retain our dedicated, hard-working employees would be appreciated. That's all I have, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, I'll ask the same question to you. Where are you gonna find people to replace the folks that you?
That's a good question, that's a good question, because there's not enough of them to go around. I will say, these are part of those positions that Jill mentioned that require a special kind of education and certification, you know, these environmental specialists, health specialists have to have at least a four-year degree with 30 semester hours of physical or biological sciences, and then once they're hired, they have to attend a centralized intern training, which takes, it can take, I don't know, three, four months to get them through that process, and then they have to go do work in the field under somebody and then they have to go do work in the field under somebody's supervision, and then they have to acquire authorizations, and there's multiple authorizations. So it can take six, six months to a year to get someone trained and authorized and working independently. I will say, and Wayne, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's legislation right now is, is, I think it's a Senate Bill 161? Thank you. Six?
616.
616 is proposed legislation where they're looking at changing the education requirements. I don't remember the specific details of the education requirements, but you wouldn't have to have as much, as high of a degree or as many science hours, but somebody could be hired as an environmental health associate, work as an environmental health associate for five years, and then obtain environmental health specialist registration after those five years and be a registered environmental health specialist, but that's not going to happen overnight, you know, that's still five years, so.
Yep.
Yep.
Comments, questions?
Sounds like she's between a rock and a hard place as well.
Yes. I'm an environmental health specialist, but I can't do soles, so when somebody's building the house, I'm, you know, it's going to be Wayne and his team. So anything y'all can do would, would be much appreciated.
All right.
Thank you.
Soil and water?
Good evening. Thank you so much, Commissioners and members of the Board, for your continued service for our community. And on behalf of our department and the other supervisors on our Board, we're able to serve our community and provide conservation things to people who would otherwise not be able to achieve it, and we really value the relationship with this Board. We've had our fair share of retention challenges, and at this time, I want to show public appreciation to Caitlin for taking on our department, kind of running a one-man show. She's done it very loyally, and she's done a very good job, and I just want to thank her on the behalf of our Board, along with Craig Fraser, our Chairman. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Caitlin so she can talk about the proposed budget.
Thank you, Carrie, that means a lot. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm happy to be before you again. We are happy with the County Manager's proposed budget. Just a couple notes on the increases, or the increase, the big increase we did have was in the salary line item, and that is for the reclassification of our engineer position. It's still vacant, we're still recruiting for that. So that's what that increase is for, and also that would be moving that position to a full-time position, before it was budgeted at a part-time position, so that increase would move it to full-time, and then also a grade increase as well. So with that, we're happy to take any questions. We do appreciate all y'all's support. And just a quick note, we did get more stream debris money, so we will be implementing that soon, so we will have gotten $500,000 total for stream debris removal in the county.
Very good. Question?
And we, we did, we did lead, we were like second in the state with that program. Yeah, we, we performed very well. Caitlin did a really good job, she stayed on top of all of it and saw it all through without any delays, really. It was really impressive.
Any bites on that posting?
Not qualified.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Register Deeds?
There's no, no increase in, in their budget, Mr. Chairman.
Library, Ross, you didn't have to wait till last, you'll take a break.
Okay. I was going to mention while he's coming up, if I could take the. Hold on a second. Just let me mention, I'm sorry, I apologize, Ross, while he's coming up, it may or may not be appropriate, but I'm going to say it anyway, that family at the Register of Deeds Office, as most of you probably know, please keep that family there, and it is very much family in our thoughts and prayers as they move through this tough week.
All right. Thank you. We are satisfied, in fact, happy with our, with the Manager's proposed budget. It gives us everything we need to continue to provide excellent library service for the people of Randolph County. It also includes our top priority continuation of the Community Navigator Program. So I will share a few updates about where the library stands and the latest on the Navigator Program, and as usual, share some comments from our 2023 Patron Survey. The library's performance measures are strong this year compared to last year. We've seen an 8.4% increase in the number of items checked out and a 52% increase in the number of visits. Last year, we saw a huge, you know, post-pandemic surge in checkouts. This year, we saw a surge in people returning to the library. That increase in visits is in part due to a 108% increase in program attendance, mainly for children, but also for teens and adults. That's a total audience of over 32,000 people this year to date. The library has made, uh, mobile library has made 92 stops, checked out over 3,600 items, and welcomed almost 4,700 visitors. Story walks are now installed in Archdale, Franklinville, Liberty, Randleman, and Seagrove, and we expect those to get heavy use as we launch our summer reading program. These were funded with Federal Library Service and Technology Act grants through the State Library of North Carolina. We were notified Tuesday that we have received two LSTA grants for the coming year, one to continue our radio frequency ID project that will streamline our handling of materials and checkouts, and then another to provide a service called tutor.com, a live, online, anytime, one-on-one tutoring service for all the schoolchildren of Randolph County. One of our major initiatives this year, and thank you for supporting this in, in the current year's budget, was bringing the Ramseur Library under county operation. It has been an unqualified success. You can see here that Ramseur is outperforming the county library system, not in raw numbers, but in those percent increases from year to year, all due to the dedication and enthusiasm of the staff and the love that the Ramseur community has for the library. One of their big projects was reorganizing the library to create a spacious children's area with room, plenty of room for story times and other activities. I didn't have a before picture, but it was so packed and, and you could barely move around, so this is the big change for that library. The response in the community has been fantastic and has included civic organizations and individuals responding with unsolicited gifts. The Community Navigator Program continues to meet our goals, exceed our expectations, and has become transformational, not just in people's lives, but also in the way the community addresses human service needs. We were thrilled when the program received a National Association of Counties Achievement Award, but the success of the Community Navigators is really about the people they are helping. Credit goes to our navigators, Angie Polito and Dana Nance, who have built the program from the ground up. Since February 2022, they have served 694 clients, with 60% of the, 66% of those followed through to positive outcomes. Because many individual clients represent more than one person, for example, a mom with three kids, and it's the mom who comes to talk to the navigators, they calculate they have linked 527 adults and 208 children with services. Many of the conditions I've mentioned previously still prevail. Most clients present with a primary need, but generally have multiple needs. Housing continues to be the number one request for assistance, and when you add in those who need help with rent, utilities, security deposits, those, those initial costs, like first month's rent, security deposit, utility connections, those are, those are pretty big deals for people who can't find apartments. That makes up just under half of all requests. The navigators have moved 26 individuals into housing, four of them children, and three people into Lydia's Place. 15 of those adults were living on the streets or in their cars. The number of people housed could be greater, except there's a long waiting list for almost every affordable apartment and every kind of housing assistance program. Speaking of Lydia's Place, the navigators currently are providing extra support for those residents after the caseworker up there departed and the position is in recruitment or being filled. That's another one of those unexpected roles the navigators end up playing in the community. Other needs range from food insecurity and medical matters to employment and transportation. Addiction issues continue to underlie about half the requests for assistance, even if that's not the primary reason someone comes to a navigator. Many of the interactions require intensive work on the part of the navigators over many weeks. Others can be resolved with a simple referral and follow-through. Just a couple of recent examples, in March, the navigators connected a disabled adult who works but does not have health insurance with free dental care through the UNC School of Dentistry to have his wisdom teeth removed. Last month, they worked with the Southern Randolph County Churches to pay a childcare bill for a working mom who had used the money allotted in her budget for childcare to pay for repairs to her car so she could go to work and not lose her job. Number of people seeking help continues to grow. The navigators received 72 requests for assistance in May alone. That's three every working day. The distribution of requests across the county has remained about the same, with 23% now coming from people who are homeless. The bulk of referrals are from community agencies and organizations, friends and family, library staff or walk-ins at the libraries, but we also see a steady number of requests from schools, referrals from schools, churches, and Department of Social Services. I made this slide not to hurt your eyes, but to give you a visual sense of all the community agencies, organizations, businesses, and individuals the navigators have engaged with or refer, to refer or receive clients and coordinate services. Many of the same organizations to which the navigators refer people for help also refer clients to the navigators. So these groups have come to rely on the navigators as much as the navigators rely on them. List also demonstrates, as I've said before, how multiple agencies can have a piece of someone's puzzle, and how hard it can be for the average person and for other support organizations acting on behalf of their clients to navigate a maze of agencies to find help, and how valuable it is to have our navigators having developed that expertise. And one of the ways they do that is to participate in collaborative community groups that are addressing human services problems. The navigators also have participated in many community events around the county and brought dementia caregiver training to the community, to three of the libraries. The Navigator Program has become so valuable and is directly helping so many people and is such a linchpin in the community's safety net, relied on by individuals and organizations alike, and it's addressing so many of the goals in the county's strategic plan that it is, as I said, our number one priority for our 2324 budget request. In talking with Hal and Will and William in January, what we arrived at and how we've approached it in our budget is to seek a three-year extension of the program with continuing funding from the Strategic Planning Reserve at a cost of $162,000, $473,000 per year before any, you know, cost of living or market adjustments. That amount primarily covers the salaries and benefits of the two navigators, with about $12,000 going for travel, continuing education, program supplies, and IT needs. We also will operate the program directly through the library rather than having the partnership for children manage the funding. This reduces bureaucracy and eliminates the administrative fee that the partnership would take. That said, the original partners will remain part of the Brain Trust, Tracy and Tara and Lisa Hayworth, and to keep the program evolving. Funding for the Navigator Program is included in the manager's budget with the revenue coming from the Strategic Planning Reserve for this year. I can't think of a library program that has shown such immediate definitive and transformative outcomes. I go back to these testimonials from Liberty. Our Liberty Army Manager there, Brenda Hornsby-Heindl, says, "The work of the Community Navigators has made an impact in our community, a small but powerful stone in a pond that is creating great ripples of change." And one of our Liberty clients, who is connected with food and clothing for her children, says, "I was helped with food and clothes and felt cared about, and that feeling was worth so much in our lives and gave us so much hope. You saved us in more ways than you know, mentally and physically." One last quick thing, please take a look at this year's Patron Survey. The flyer in your packets includes highlights from the 305 individual surveys returned, and you can find all the responses at randolphlibrary.org/survey23. It's an impressive snapshot of how our citizens view their library and what it means to them. And let me highlight just one comment here from an Ashboro Patron, "A library is a place to learn, to achieve goals, and be free to live the American dream." Thank you, and thank you for your strong support of the library, and if you have any questions, I'll answer them.
I just have to say that regardless of what part of the county I go into for meetings, invariably someone will say something to me about the Navigator Program and how pleased they are and what a, what a void it has filled, how much they appreciate the innovative thinking, and I love seeing the collaboration that takes place among our other departments. And when you talk about, you know, when we get the concern about homeless population and you tell us that 15 of these people were living on their, on the street or in the car, well, I mean, this is a good way to connect them to services they feel safe.
Right.
Our libraries are located in all parts of our county, and they feel safe. That's a safe space, that they feel not judged, and they can go in and, you know, and build a relationship and talk to someone about what their needs are.
And those are words we see in our surveys over and again, the word place and the word safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Animal Services, Jonathan?
Good evening, Chair and County Commissioners.
Jonathan?
Thank you guys for everything you do. I do have a handout for you that I gave out before, earlier, if you guys have it. So animal services is a vital part of our county. As an overview, the Randolph County Animal Service Department provides animal sheltering, animal law enforcement, rabies control, pet adoption, animal welfare organization, networking, and volunteering in the public education programs. We have been operating with pretty much the same budget over the past several years. We have asked for assistance to continue being able to operate. This year is no different. We are requesting one full-time animal control officer, a vehicle, as well as two part-time animal care tenants. Like most county agencies, we are seeing the fallout from our, from our economy that has made things extremely difficult for animal owners and in return, our agency. We currently have five animal control officers who are responsible for providing critical services to different zones throughout the entire county. When a call goes out, those officers have to report to the area while having to continue taking calls. There are not enough officers to respond to all the areas in the county while also continuing to provide services as more calls come in. This makes our response time often 20 to 40, 40 minutes, depending on our call volume. At this moment to date, we have responded to over 3,891 calls, and this has continually gone up every single year for the past three years. Officers respond to different kind of calls, including dangerous dog investigations, cruelty cases, state and law investigations, animal law violations, rabies reports, abandoned animals, livestock issues, as well as various other calls. Not having enough hour, not having enough officers puts the general public and animals in danger. Officers work on a hot, we work on call 24/7/365. And with that, now we're getting the turnover due to burnout at this point. At the shelter, we have both the positions that work together, often outside their job descriptions, and tend to multitude of things in our shelter. Due to the unprecedented number of animals being taken in or surrendered, animal intake alone, attendants have a difficult time to complete the task. Economic hardships have led pet owners to surrender animals they can no longer care for and feed. Another issue Animal Services has been addressing is the prevalence of animal hoarding cases. This has been growing concern we have encountered for the recent months due to the justice system giving little to no punishments and sanctions. This growing issue is not getting any better anytime soon, which again is leading to an increase in our numbers in the shelter. We have seen higher rates of animals entering the shelter. Right now, we are about three-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-one animals have been processed through the shelter from July twenty-twenty-two to today, and it's increasing daily. Our animal care attendants are continuously cleaning, doing laundry, bathing animals, providing medication management, providing critical blood work if needed, as well as heartworm testing. Intake processing needs to be done with every animal that is brought into our shelter, flea spray, providing worm medication, checking for microchips, and so on. All animals need to be documented, monitored, and provided care for as needed. Dog testing will be done to see if they're able to be around other animals, other people, as well as if they're going to be candidates to go to rescue. Provide vaccinations, transport to and from vets for spay and neuter, also provide medical care when needed. All work while being exposed to potential dangerous situations, diseases. This work is overwhelming and a lot for three full-time and one part-time attendant and due to the demand of high turnover. Although I have implemented the initiation of a peer support group to assist dealing with the emotional demands of the job as well as our very own pet therapy that our agency was overlooked with. More positions in the form of two part-times attendants will assist in the overflow of work due in the constant increases of animal intake. It will also allow some time to be free in order to strengthen our community outreach in schools as well as in the public on animal and pet safety to decrease our calls involving dangerous animals and investigations of animal cruelty. Also, we often rely heavily on our volunteers like RCSPCA, who volunteer over sixty hours a week, who assists our staff with moving fifty animals out of the shelter in a month. We appreciate the assistance, but having more staff can allow us to keep this work in-house. And work alongside these partners, educating them and spending the time to work with them and empowering both our staff and the community. However, due to the high numbers we have seen and the work that needs to be done, we cannot operate with how we would like to, missing out with connecting with the public. Unfortunately, the Department of Ag is constantly changing on us. We have new rules that have now dropped down from the Ag that we have to follow. These extra positions need to be added to help with the added work. So all this will put a constant strain on the current staff that we have now. We have employees assisting with community outreach and often work special events that we do around the community. We are thankful for the partnerships that we have created since I've been the director. Some of them included is the RCSPCA. We've worked some with the Library doing events, Juvenile Day Reporting Center, Happy Heels, and Veteran Services. We are constantly seeking outside funding sources and was awarded a grant for one-hundred-and-fifty-six grand, which was the largest grant received to date by Animal Services. This grant was awarded to us to help lower our CAT euthanization numbers and to help with the TNR program for spay and neuter. We often receive an outpouring amount of support from the public and other community organizations with generous donations with assisting keeping low costs down in areas of our budget. Our fear is without these additional positions, we will continue to lose employees to burnout as well as not being able to keep up with the overwhelming demand of services and homes needed for our animals. Thank you for your time and consideration in helping the Animal Services continue to serve the county for the best of our ability in the most effective and efficient way in order for our public to keep our animals safe. Any questions?
Questions?
So what we're asking for is one, one full-time and two part-time positions, and with the position would be a new vehicle, as well as would have to up the gas in that as well. That'd be a total of one-forty-six, eight-fifty-seven is what we're asking for.
Those figures you just gave, you're asking for these additional?
Correct.
Would you state that again, would you?
So it's, well, what we had proposed and what the county had proposed is we're just asking for the one-forty-six, eight-fifty-seven. It's already in on the, our proposal.
Personnel-wise?
Oh, one full-time and two part-time positions.
And a vehicle? I think I heard it.
I'm sorry?
I think I heard you say maybe a vehicle or?
A vehicle, yes, sir, for the extra animal control officer.
Do you have a lot of volunteer help?
Um, we're, it's growing right now. We've got a lot more than we did used to. We only had like one or two, and I think now we're up to about five or six right now. We're still trying to get it out there, still trying to grow it.
Well, on TV, a lot of times in news shows, they're talking about this shelter or that shelter, you know, they're maxed out. They just can't really take anymore. What happens? First of all, I guess I ask you, are you maxed out?
Um, we, we are, we are, I'm not going to say we're maxed out. We can house a hundred cats, a hundred dogs. We try to obviously stay away from that because that's considered having four animals in each kennel. When you start getting that, you start getting animals fighting, and then that creates into more bills where you gotta have vet bills because they're gonna start attacking each other. But no, we try to minimize that as much as possible. We try to do one or two in each kennel, but then once it starts getting to three to the four, that's when we are at our capacity and we're overwhelmed at that point, and we're playing the musical chairs of dogs, move them around, who can get along with who, and who's been vaccinated, who hasn't been vaccinated, you know, things like that. So it does, it does get tricky. But yeah, I mean, we are, we're full. We're just not at our max capacity, no. We try to never be at our max capacity.
And I don't believe I heard anything about food costs going up or anything like that.
I mean, was it right now, most of our food right now, it does get donated. That's from the years I've been there, we've always had people just bringing in food all the time. Plus, we get it from Walmart, we get it from Tractor Supply, we get it from pretty much all over. We do have money there where if we have to buy food, we're obviously gonna buy food for the animals. We're not gonna let them go without food.
But the other agencies in town do help, companies do help provide food for you?
Oh, correct, yes, sir.
On a?
Regular basis.
Contribution basis. That's great.
Yeah.
I'd just like to say congratulations on the good press recently and the collaboration with the Juvenile Day Reporting Center, Pam Resch, and the schools for the Tales for Tales that seems like it's excellent for the animals and excellent for the students as well, so.
It is.
It's been great.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Appreciate what you do.
All right, thank y'all.
Juvenile Day, Pam?
Good evening, everyone. I don't know, is it? Technical difficulties. We're gonna focus on two charts that are in there, and I don't know if you guys have them in front of you. They look like these, too. They could be in the entire PowerPoint somewhere. But while she's looking for that, I'm just going to say thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you guys today about the Juvenile Day Reporting Center and everything that we're doing for our community. I'd like to take a minute to acknowledge some of my staff that's sitting right here behind us. Four case managers are over here, and that is pretty much everybody who takes care of all the youth that come through our doors on a daily basis. So I just want to say how proud I am of them and all the hard work that they do to work with our most vulnerable population here in the county. They are the best. So I just want to take you a little bit back to the time when JDRC first became a county agency in nineteen-ninety-nine. So this agency has been through multiple changes since that time, and where it's all started to where we are now, we have to make sure that we acknowledge the past to understand where we're gonna go in the future. So the first chart that you're going to see is pretty much our organizational chart, and these are the men and the women who provide the services in our agency currently, and there's fifteen employees, and each employee has multiple rows, roles that they complete on a daily basis. If you can look at, we have four transportation aides, and then we have an administrative assistant, a program manager, two office assistants who also work in transportation. One does parenting classes, and one's an instructor for Alive at Twenty-Five. And then we have a teen court case manager that handles teen court restitution and traffic teen court. And then we have three case managers that handle the bulk of all the courses that JDRC offers. And then we have a substance abuse case manager and a mentor. So each one of these case managers also do transportation, and then they teach all of the courses that we have, and that includes tutoring, life skills, aggression replacement, family classes, suspension program classes, gun and gang violence classes, and an apprenticeship program. So this, I want you to just keep in mind just the staff and everything that I'm gonna read through today and what we do there at JDRC. So the second page that you're gonna see is, I'm gonna walk you through it, and this is what our agency looks like throughout the years from nineteen-ninety-nine to twenty-twenty-four. So the chart shows the number of staff that JDRC has had from ninety-nine to the present day, the number of programs offered at JDRC during those times, and the number of youth who have been served during those years. So the staff is the one that's kind of like the gray line, the number of youth is a green line that goes throughout, and then the red bar graph is the number of programs that JDRC has offered. So throughout the years, JDRC has always provided critical services for youth who are free, and they've always provided transportation to all the participants. Most of the funding that we receive at JDRC comes from grants either through Governor's Crime Commission or juvenile crime prevention as well. We're still working on the computer stuff, but we'll continue. So many changes have come through Randolph County, like most of the world, and the programming has remained consistent in the JDRC with providing services like educational assistance, life skills, anger classes, as well as substance abuse and family classes. So during much of the history of JDRC, there was about five different classes that were taught. So this is from about nineteen-ninety-nine all the way to two-thousand-nineteen. Staffing remained around the same during two-thousand-one to twenty-twenty, hovering right around the twelve to eleven staff members, and the average number of youth served during that time in that twenty-year span was one-hundred-and-sixty-three youth a year. So that averaged about forty youth per four case managers throughout that entire year that they were working with. So when I became the director in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, that was right when COVID took over, and I used that time to grow into this position and figure out what the role was. Every year, studies are conducted to identify the risks that our youth and families face, and those numbers of risks grow every single year, as well as shifting and changing and manipulating the courses and the classes that we have to have. So I realized something, that our programs at JDRC were not growing to meet the needs in a holistic approach, meaning wrapping the families and kids around in services that they need, and we were really falling short on making meaningful changes with those youth. So during the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year, I decided that a change needed to happen and implemented four new programs and received all of the grant funding through juvenile crime prevention. We also obtained outside funding sources to assist with our growing agency. So we received forty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety extra dollars additional from the state on top of another thirty-seven-thousand dollars with discretionary funds from the state. And with that, we purchased vehicles, we implemented more staffing, and we also implemented more programming. We obtained our substance use outpatient treatment facility license during that year, and we obtained a position that you all funded as a substance abuse case manager. We also split a couple of full-time positions into part-time positions on a trial basis to see if those were, if there was a different way to effectively and efficiently do more work in our agency. We also began creating very impactful partnerships with outside agencies, one of which was Randolph Community College, to support the GED and adult education programs. So most of the youth that get suspended and expelled from school and want to drop out of high school and obtain their GED, they cannot go onto RCC's campus due to safety reasons, and that's what their policy is. So what we did is we partnered up with RCC, and they actually provide us with an instructor that comes to our building four days a week, nine AM to one PM, to assist those youth in getting their GED. And we actually just went to RCC a couple of weeks ago and celebrated four of our students getting their GED. So that was a really good partnership that we had created. Also during that year, it was our first year of the BRIC summer camp for our at-risk youth with the Sheriff's Department, and then, and we also served one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty youth during that time. This is over a thousand more youth than the previous year, and we still only had four case managers teaching classes, which equaled about two-hundred-and-ninety-five youth per year per case manager. So finally, in last, this fiscal year, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, the JDRC yet again secured all of the JCP funds, along with forty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars in discretionary money from the state, as well as being seeped into a pilot program for traffic teen court with an additional twenty-thousand dollars granted to complete this. The JDRC also implemented more programming for our youth in the form of creating the very first substance abuse support group for juveniles in Randolph County, our GED program with RCC, another year for our BRIC summer program, mentoring, parenting classes, traffic teen court, and JDRC also became certified defensive driving instructors with the state of North Carolina during that time. We also initiated the Tales for Tales reading program with Animal Services, as well as our original programming, which included job readiness, life skills, teen court restitution, aggression replacement, enhanced strengthening family class that now captured ages six to seventeen instead of ten to seventeen, and a suspension program that allowed youth to come to our facility Monday through Friday from nine AM to one PM, as well as our long-term suspended and expelled youth, instead of letting them stay at home all day without that support. So we're actually providing the extra educational support for them. So this brought JDRC totaling, offering thirteen different classes now, and we are able to expand the roles of part-time positions, making them into full-time positions in order to accommodate the influx of referrals. So this, to date, from twenty-twenty-two, July, we have served about fifteen-hundred youth. So this number continues to grow every single day. It now averages our four case managers working with about three-hundred-and-seventy-five youth per year. So many staff, including myself, handle more than just teaching classes or what's listed in their actual job descriptions. Many staff members are transporting our youth daily to and from classes, and we handle about fifty-plus youth a day in our facility on a daily basis, and that's as well as specializing in areas of more than one that they're actually teaching in. So as you can see from the organizational chart, staff roles are expanded as much as they can, and they are getting definitely overworked at this time. So in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, as we move into the new fiscal year, we've already secured the full JCPC grant again, and we also have, I just heard actually today that we're receiving another twenty-thousand dollars to continue on with our traffic teen court. I've always looked for outside funding sources. I have never asked the county for additional money in our budget and capital outlay of program materials. I make sure that we always do that with outside funding sources. At this time, JDRC is awaiting approval for funding to expand our programming and enhance what we already serve, and we are waiting on fifty-thousand dollars from opioid funds, hopefully to expand on our substance abuse class that we have. We're also waiting on a grant to hear from, for Governor's Crime that is totaling four-hundred-thousand dollars, and we're also waiting on a grant from the Office of Justice that totals six million dollars. Right now, we're implementing new program coming into this new fiscal year, starting in July. Some of that programming that we need is everything that we had mentioned before, but we're also implementing a paid apprenticeship program for our youth, a gang and gun violence prevention class, and conflict resolution. So now we'll have a total of sixteen classes offered at JDRC, and we currently have more programming and youth being served than actual staff members. It's a good problem to have with the amount of youth that are getting served, but we want to make sure that we're providing the best services that we can to them. So at this time, as I mentioned, we are asking for two part-time case managers to help with that and one part-time transportation aide that can assist in our growing programs and the youth being served. Thank you again for your support and entrusting me with working with our youth, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to ask.
You've been busy.
Very. It's a good problem to have, though.
Yes.
I guess it's not really a budget, you know, ask or whatever, but just, well, it was a great presentation, thank you, but we're trying to hurry up, so skim over things. But so you had, I just pulled that out, you have the only youth substance abuse support group in the county. Can you just tell everybody exactly what that means?
Yeah, so in Randolph County, we have support groups, we have NAIA and stuff like that for our adults, but we have nothing that is juvenile-specific. So in JDRC, we have, because we're a licensed treatment facility, we provide assessments, treatment, and educational courses, and we wanted to implement a support group. So what we do with our support group is we not only support our youth working through what it means to have an opioid use addiction or any kind of addiction what they are going through, but we also bring in the families so they can learn how to identify and support their child through this whole process. So this is the very first one in Randolph County.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How many are you dealing, you deal with there?
So we've received about a hundred and eighty referrals so far for juveniles with substance use. We have conducted about twenty assessments this year to figure out exactly what type of care these children have needed. And we have about twenty kids in our support groups that come on a weekly basis. And sometimes they're there twice a week, depending on what that need looks like, because it's very different for each one.
And all those referrals are from courts?
So the fifteen hundred referrals that we get, our number one referral source is our law enforcement agencies here. Our court services out of fifteen hundred, I would say about forty-eight come from our court systems, from our juvenile court systems. The rest comes from our law enforcement, our schools, social services, mental health agencies, and parents.
Well.
So as you could see, you know, going through the years, a hundred and sixty-three youth being served versus fifteen hundred being served is a huge increase with pretty much the same amount of staffing.
Very good. Anything else? Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
Damon, Charles Ford Services. We'll stop at eight o'clock. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. I'll be brief. Pleased with the budget as it is presented today. All the heavy lifting and all the credit for that has to go to Jill Williams, Michael McKenzie, and Crystal Hudson. You guys feel free to give them a round of applause again if you want to. I've been coming up there for thirteen years. This is the first time that I've ever had to ask for positions, two years in a row. And I promise you, I won't do it again if you go ahead and approve it.
Very good, Damon.
Any questions?
How long were you here before we took it over, before it was given to the counties?
How long, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Before the state turned this part over to us.
Two thousand and ten is when we became part of the county. Yes, sir. So thirteen years. It's been much easier with the county than it was with the state. Much more productive, too.
Good to hear.
Questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Damon. Appreciate it. All right, Hal.
I support the manager's recommendation for planning and zoning. I've been waiting to say that.
If you don't like it, you talk to yourself.
The, there's no increase in the budget recommendation for planning and zoning. We're in the process of actively recruiting the vacancy of planning director's position.
And that's going, it's going very well.
Yes.
Veteran Services? Lizbeth?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Veteran Services has continued to grow, and I'm excited to share with you all tonight the progress we have made. I would like to start off by recognizing my hard-working team. Without them, we would not be where we are now. Kenneth Harville, Army retired, Lisa Wright, Air Force, and our newest Rita Honeycutt, who is here with us tonight, who is also Air Force. Our mission is to work with veterans, dependents, and the public with all needs concerning our veterans and informing the public of those needs through our credited staff. We are the voice of our veterans, and our goal is to stand apart from other county veteran services by offering more than VA benefits. To give an idea on our growth, I have included a statistical progression chart that shows our significant increase. Our office has obtained over fifty-seven million federal dollars from the VA between compensation, pension, DIC, and survivor's pension, and an estimated twenty-eight million from medical, education, burial, and other miscellaneous programs. Although it was last October, August that the PACD Act came out, it wasn't until January first that the VA started processing just these claims. Between this and expanding our outreach and community events, we have seen a surge in cases. Due to our growth in demand, trying to maintain the privacy of our veterans, our appointment time has gone from twenty-four to forty-eight hours to now a timeframe of five to seven business days to get an appointment. To give an idea, from the first and the third quarter, there has been about a twelve-and-a-half percent increase in new awards and a twenty percent increase from last year to this year in federal dollars paid to just our veterans. We have also participated in seventy-three events, outreach, and home visits, which include our bedridden veterans, since July thirteenth of twenty twenty-two. And as you can tell, this is much higher than previous years. With our significant increase, our staff has reached twenty-eight to thirty-seven Randolph County veterans unaware of office, our office or services, and the number is continuing to grow. Here are just a few of the community engagements we have been involved with and some local organizations we support. A few highlights and accomplishments from this year. Our collaboration with Animal Services is our most recent program that we are currently promoting and trying to grow is Patriot Pulse. Our goal is to bring veterans together to volunteer at the shelter, which may help their mental health and gain new skills, along with their socialization with these animals to help get their adoption. Rita Honeycutt completed the peer support program and is now a certified peer support specialist with veteran designation. Oftentimes, our veterans prefer, prefer to work and speak with other veterans. With this training, we would like to offer our veterans an option of working with someone that has mental health background. Rita can meet with veterans, individual or in-group settings. This would allow veterans to opt, who often slip through the cracks with the VA, to have extra support and resources. We are currently working with Bright View to get a Veterans Rehabilitation Services once their facility opens. And on March twenty-ninth, we hosted a Vietnam Veterans Day breakfast at our office, and are currently working on the Hall of Heroes, which showcases photos of our local veterans outside our office door. Our most established program is our Veterans Exchange Closet and Pantry that officially opened on March third and had an estimated of two thousand to three thousand dollars worth of supplies to help get this started, and now has overflowed into our office spaces thanks to our generous community. Since opening, we have helped, this slide is going to show forty-two, but we actually had two more veterans that come through today, with food, toiletries, clothing, medical equipment, and more. We are grateful to the fourteen volunteers who spent a total of thirty-five hours to get this space stocked and everyone who has donated. Our office has been involved in either hosting or participating with other programs and fundraising lately, and there may be some wondering why. We wanted to step above and work hard to set the bar for our, with our service office, should be, especially to our veterans. We want to offer more than just claim work, paperwork, and assist them with different programs to help our veterans to get more than their monthly VA compensation benefits. All these programs and our local veterans are being helped through these fundraising efforts. Our future opportunities that we are planning on, a stand-down, which is a one-day event to provide clothing, food, and health screenings to our displaced and at-risk veterans. In addition, veterans can also receive housing solution, employment, mental health, and substance use counseling and other essential services. We are also working on the Veteran Prison Program. This is in the baby steps that's been developed by Kenneth Harville, one of our VSOs. He is working with a fellow director in Roan County, Justin Mounts, and Lucas Verbisky, who is an incarcerated veteran specialist for North Carolina. Justin is already implementing this program in his county to better serve our incarcerated veterans. He'll be working with Kenneth on reentry as well as life sentence veterans. Kenneth met with the prison staff on June sixth to work on implementing this and getting it in place. The Wild That Heals is a mobile education center and a three-quarter square scale replica of Vietnam Veterans Memorial. This traveling exhibit is a tribute to the fifty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-one men and women who lost their lives in Vietnam and honors more than three million Americans who served during this war and is run by volunteers. We have asked this year to have Rita, our office administrative assistant, to be reclassified as a VSO to help assist with these VA benefits and a part-time position that will focus on the front desk either during our peak hours, which are usually ten to two, Monday through Thursday, or when we are short-staffed. And then I just want to thank you all for your time and the opportunity to present this tonight and be happy to answer any questions.
Lizbeth, one of your, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just said good work serving our veterans. I said good work serving our veterans.
On one of your slides, why are you having fundraisers?
Mm-hmm.
Did you get a complaint for that?
No, no, we just, yeah, we just wanted to put it out there. I know we have a few that we're, that we are hosting that's coming up, but we also try to help the Veterans Council when they have their honoring our veterans car show. I helped out with that, not this past year, but the year before, and we plan on doing it this September as well.
I see the honor guard quite a bit.
Yes. Yeah, they've been a big help. And
Great guys.
They, they're needing recruitment, so if anybody is interested, that would be great. And they, they're very quick. We just, I had to use them Sunday for a personal matter, and within twenty-four hours, they were there.
There was one yesterday.
Thank you.
All right. Adult Day Reporting Center, Julie?
Julie twisted her knee, and so she's on a knee scooter. So I told her she didn't need to show up tonight, and she's, there's no increase in her budget for this year.
All right, let's, let's take about a three-minute break here, and then we'll come back with Tax Department and wrap it up. We're ready, Deborah.
First, as a citizen, as a citizen of Randolph County, I'd like to thank y'all for all you do and the good stewardship of our tax money. As a department head, I'd like to thank you for all the support you give to the Tax Department. Part of that support this year is approving a real property appraiser's position that we truly need for the growth that we're having in Randolph County. Just in the Archdale Trinity area, there's an expected twelve hundred new homes planned for that area. Then the growth that we expect in the northwest corner of the county, plus all the other growth across the whole county itself. Currently, the five appraiser, field appraisers have a, there is approximately sixteen thousand parcels that they're responsible for in their area. We try to divide those areas up based on the number of parcels. The sixteen thousand is above the recommended standard average. So I appreciate the proposed additional real property appraiser being approved.
I think that was included, wasn't it? Yep.
Yes. So, and as far as our other expense, it's relatively the same. So thank you. Any questions?
Didn't I see Guilford was asking for eleven more of them? I think that's right.
Eleven.
Guilford was asking for eleven more.
And probably Forsyth is asking for even more than that because Forsyth, Guilford has taken
Yeah.
several of the staff from Forsyth County. They've been able to offer them more. But it's a challenging time.
Mr. Chairman, I, I got to say, I've talked to several different people over the last while, and, and you just hear good things being said about this Tax Department. And just about a week or so ago, a guy was talking to me about it. He said, because you're talking about the revow and all that's going on. He said, I talked to the lady down there, she was the nicest woman. She was just a very nice lady, very congenial and nice, and helped me extremely well. And you don't, you don't usually expect to hear that out of the Tax Department.
Thank you. We, we try, we try.
I did talk to one of the E and R board members the other day for a good while. If there's a little bit of a trend in all, all the appeals, a lot of it has to do with manufactured housing, mobile homes.
That is correct. We have seen a surge in the values of, the market trend for a manufactured housing has increased.
And the last time, part of, it's contributed, last time, they were, they were written down big time.
Well, that is true. Back in the two thousand fourteen reappraisal, manufactured home, you could purchase for less than you could buy a storage building at Lowe's Hardware.
Right.
They were going for less than ten dollars a square foot in some cases. Uh, but now we have seen, I guess because of the housing shortage, I don't know what, because it has fascinated us as to seeing what, uh, the, the trend in the manufacturing home has, how it has increased.
Some of them in the $200,000 range.
That is correct. And for some folks, it has been a, a shock to see their values go up. And then too, this is mass appraisal. So in that, in the appeal process, we can take a, a deeper look and visit the interior of a property and we can make adjustments in some cases. But overall, manufactured housing has, the market has increased.
How many, how many cases have you had and, and anticipate at this point?
Okay, the appeal, okay. The, the appeal process, the time to appeal has come and gone. You had until May the 19th to, uh, file an appeal. At this time, we had about 2,600, and then not saying that we have 2,600 appeals. But what happened is all the informal appeals that was not, uh, reviewed prior to the Board of Equals, I can't even talk, Board of Equalization and, and review, uh, adjourning for their, uh, starting their meeting, all that had to roll to the Board of Equalization Review. Once they start meeting, all that had to go to the Board of Equalization Review. So there's about 2,600 cases and so far we've heard about 350.
I mean, 350? And those?
About 2,600 cases?
But, but think about it, we have 80,500 parcels. So 2,600 is a small, 2,600 is a lot, but still it's a small percentage overall.
And they've heard how many?
Three, about 350.
And a lot of that, those manufactured homes are
Part of that 26.
And they're rented, they're being, the owners not, they're not always owned or occupied.
Most of them, most of the appeals we've had are owned or occupied, mm-hmm.
How many parcels did you say?
80,455 to be exact.
Just having to know that. Wow.
And if we're talking, I'm sure some of you have had phone calls or complaints about, uh, antique motor vehicles or the letters that they've sent them. We are to value property at market value. We are to treat everybody equal. And so these letters is being sent out and we're trying to get some of these antique vehicles valued at its true market value. Uh, some of these are show cars that are, are expensive show cars. They're worth more than the ones parked out in your backyard with no motor, this sort of thing. So it has been a, it's been a challenge with some of these car owners to get them to recognize the market value.
Is this the first time y'all have done this?
We have, uh, taken a, I don't want to say a stronger approach, but we have, we've taken a stronger approach. But, uh, it's just trying to make it, you know, fair, fair for everybody. That market value, if we're going after the market value of real estate, then it should be the market value of all property.
That's fair.
It's only fair.
All right. Other question, comments?
Can, one question I do have, what's the, uh, the, the year, there's a certain age?
50 years. For, uh, usually for, for it to be classified antique and always is be 50 years old.
50 years old and older is an antique car and would have that market value?
Yeah, we could.
And 50 and less is what? Is what?
Average retail, yeah, average retail.
Just a junker.
Junk. Junk. Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, RJ, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and Board. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank you all, um, for your continued support and consideration of all the technology services and initiatives in the county.
You realize we're, we're, you're a mercy, don't you? This whole county is.
Yeah, um, so we, we do, you know, the department and myself, we, we really appreciate that. Um, it, it means a lot to have that support, so I'd just like to thank you all for that. I'd also like to thank my staff for their continued hard work and efforts. And it's truly a blessing to work and lead such a, a talented group of professional folks. Um, it really is, so we got a really good IT team that I'm proud of. The county manager's budget as proposed for IT, um, i- is, is, uh, sufficient for the coming year to sustain our operations? I'm happy with that. There are a couple of things that I would like to, to point out. You'll notice that there's a trend, you know, everything's going up. We, we've had everything in, in all these economies and, and, you know, hate to mention it, but COVID. So, um, you know, our hardware costs are going up 20%. Our software costs are around 10. Um, the, the good thing about it, if you can say a good thing about a price increase, it has plateaued. So hopefully that'll kind of hold, you know, for a while, um, depending on other, you know, factors. But, um, so, so there's a little bit of an increase there. Another thing I'd like to mention, that I have requested an additional position, uh, for the coming year, and it is for a public safety support analyst. You know, our, our public safety system in Randolph County is, is one of our critical enterprise systems. This system is used not only by our sheriff's department, our emergency services, but also every first responder life safety agency in the county of Randolph. Um, if you think about that, that's a lot of folks, you know, fire, all your, your municipalities, PDs, uh, you know, your volunteer folks, your, uh, you know, other rescue services. So we've traditionally had one FTE for that. And I know my predecessor, uh, had mentioned that in his previous two budget proposals, I think, that, uh, we had a need there and we were doing our best to, uh, you know, cover that, cross train and, and try to bring other staff in. And, and we have, we really tried to do that, but it, it's just not an efficient model. Looking from March last year to March this year, um, I've got a measured increase, uh, by, you know, running the reports of, of 2,074 additional support hours. So, um, you know, that's a substantial amount when you consider a full-time equivalent employee is 2,080. Um, so, so we're right there. And, and the majority of those hours were for public safety support. Um, so that's also, uh, included in the proposed budget. I, I do feel that that's a definite need, that, you know, not only does it help the workload, but it, uh, it, it helps us with redundant resilient coverage as well as allows for succession planning. Um, you know, uh, it, it's sad to hear other folks having problems, you know, keeping people and retaining staff. That's not a problem we have in IT. Um, if you recall, we, we just had, uh, Ms. Linda Smith retired after 36 years of service. So, um, but we do have some folks and one of the folks in this, uh, particular position, they're getting on up to high twenties. So, uh, it's a really good time to, to try to introduce that, get some redundant coverage for that critical role and, uh, and move on down the road. But, uh, that, that's the major highlights that I had, uh, to present tonight. Does anybody have any questions?
How safe are we, RJ?
Uh, are, are you, are you speaking in terms of cyber?
Hacking, your cyber attacks, getting into our system?
Uh.
IDs, you know?
Chairman Fry, we're as safe as we can be. Um, you know, you, you can only do what you can do. And, and another thing, just, just to, to, to bring it up, I know it was, was last year and before I moved into the role, but, you know, this board, um, allocated additional funding for our cybersecurity initiatives. And, you know, when I came into this role, you know, I inherited a budget I didn't create. And then I had, uh, I think three positions to fill and since then I've had two or three retirements. So it's been very dynamic, but, uh, was fortunate to have these additional funds for these cyber initiatives. So, you know, I set priority on those and, and we planned, we executed, and we had every one of those projects up and running and in place by the end of the first quarter this year. And, um, I'm really pleased with, with what we're seeing from those products. And, and just to share a little snippet, I, I know, uh, time is precious tonight, but just to share, uh, uh, I feel an interesting fact. You know, now we have more granularity and we can see more things than we did before. And, um, kind of a, an astounding thing to me, we, I get a report every week that, that shows us the, the malware attempts and the different things, whether they're directed or indirect. They're, they're still, you know, coming at us. And, and the number for that, Randolph County, our IT presence in, in the world, we average a little over 30,000 malware attempts towards our network each week. That's a calendar week, seven days.
Did you say week?
Yes, sir.
Say that again.
Over 30,000 malware attempts or interactions within a seven-day calendar week. That's what we're averaging. And that's outside the network, that's not in, inside the network. So there's other considerations there too, but that, that may be another conversation. But, um, you know, that's sort of an eye-opener because you, you, you do the math and divide, that's over three per minute. And of course that ebbs and flows, so you, you'll see a high percentage at certain times. But, but, you know, just, that just kind of puts it in perspective, over 30,000 in a seven-day calendar week. And so, uh, the, the bad stuff's out there and, and, you know, to, to round out your question, uh, we're, we're doing basically everything we can and we're staying ever vigilant on that front as well.
Very good.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I've got, I've got a kind of a loaded question a little bit, because we've had a conversation. Where do you find a lot of these, these, uh, intrusions coming from?
Remember you told me some stuff.
Yeah, di- different places. I mean, there's certain things that we have in place to, to block certain areas that Randolph County would, would probably never interact with. Um, so a, a lot of those, you know, foreign countries and, and places like that, um, where a lot of these threat actors live, um, we're kind of safeguarded, um, you know, from those. But most of these are just common internet. That's just, just on the internet. And, you know, people don't, don't realize it, but it's just out there. Um, whether it's a directed attack or just floating around waiting to attach to somebody as they go out to, to look at a website, they're there.
But what foreign countries are you, have you gotten, if you can say so? I don't know where you can or not.
Well, so, um, you know, we're, we, we take advantage of the, uh, Center for, uh, Internet Security, um, which is, uh, you know, a division of MSISAC, which is the federal government's, uh, cyber agency, or one of them. And they identify some of the, the greatest threats as coming from Russia, Ukraine, China. You know, some of your either partially or totally communist countries. Um, so that's where a lot of that comes from.
I guess Randolph County does a lot of work in, in Russia and China, Ukraine.
Yeah. Well, they're, and, and that's the thing, you, uh, you, you don't have to interact with them. They just have a presence out there in this wonderful internet we have. So they're just floating around waiting for prey.
We, we have mandatory programs too for every employee in the county to, to be trained on cyber awareness and security. And we, and when, and they have to pass, uh, actual tests that are given to them. If they don't, we shut down their computer until they do.
That's correct. We, we continue to do training campaigns and, and several other initiatives to keep staff up to speed.
So Maxton, we're gonna shut you off here, surely.
Shut me off.
All right, anything else?
Quick question, I'm making, so, well, all the GIS.
Hello, can you hear me? So the IT guy didn't turn my mic on. The, all the GIS, is that under you? Like if there's a hyperlink on there, I have a question about, is that you? Okay, I'll catch you later.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, we're, we're
Okay, well, I, I'll, I'll add something about GIS very briefly. Um, we, we had to do a, a mandatory GIS update back in January. It, it wasn't a choice, it was a have-to. And, and as many of us know, you know, sometimes we do an update and, and then there's a period of fine tuning. So we, we did this update and, um, you know, things were a little bit different than our previous GIS version. And so that, that's been a continued work. But I will tell you that in the last two weeks, there have been significant improvements to the GIS system. Um, we, we've, uh, you know, we've solicited feedback from outside agencies. I, I've set up a work session with DOT, some real estate and developers, um, you know, just multiple folks outside the county and within the county and other departments. And, and we've looked at some of the, uh, the shortcomings and issues. And I feel like at this point, I, I urge everybody to try it and if you have problems, please let me know. But, uh, it, it is, uh, much, much better and, and we're getting a handle on, uh, those changes necessary from that update.
Very good.
Yeah, questions? Good? Thank you.
Thank you, RJ. All right, elections, Melissa?
Good evening Commissioners. Before I begin tonight, I want to speak up on behalf of my friend Damon, who wanted to make sure you know that Child Support Services has a 60% 66% reimbursement rate.
Very good, Damon.
We were sitting next to each other and that's one thing he needed to make sure you knew. Is that all? Okay.
Love it, Damon.
He's a friend and a good neighbor now up at, at Northgate. So I want to first start by thanking, uh, the Board of Commissioners as well as my county coworkers. So many of them have helped us and our county's voters. Because we, we feel the support. We've had a lot of support through the last several sort of challenging elections. And the support that you show us allows your county elections board and the office staff to conduct elections with the utmost integrity. Also want to recognize, uh, one of our board members, Mary Jean Pugh is here. And I want to thank her for her support and for being here tonight as well. So the elections budget, we are pleased with it, very thankful for it. It does request, the budget request varies from year to year based upon the number and type of elections that we must conduct as well as the resources that are required for each one. So you'll see it go up and down a little bit. Our budget requests for this coming fiscal year includes an increase over 2023 because it does include funding for three elections. The 2023 municipal, the 2024 presidential primary, and a second primary if needed. It also includes, um, a modest, but we believe a very necessary pay increase for both election day and early voting workers. Just briefly, our nation's elections are up against more challenges than ever before. I'm sure you've heard a lot in the news. Elections offices are facing great scrutiny and questioning of our processes and integrity, concerns for safety of voters and staff, multiple election law changes, and a lack of resources in many cases to implement these changes. In Randolph County, we've had the largest number of registered voters in our history in 2022. That was right at 96,000, which we're thrilled with. But of course, uh, that takes a little uh, that takes a little, a few more resources. Um, some of our greatest challenges that we're looking at in Randolph County, uh, probably top is recruiting, retaining, and training enough precinct officials, especially computer knowledgeable precinct officials, um, for at least the next two years and beyond. Securing and maintaining safe, secure, and compliant voting sites, providing secure, updated voting equipment to ensure accurate and accessible elections, um, training those workers, and educating voters as well about photo ID requirements, redistricting, and other new election law changes and processes. And, um, we're seeing several new election bills that are up, um, for consideration now, that will have a lot of, lot of changes that we will need to educate people about if they are passed. Um, and then we're going to be absorbing the rising costs, just like everyone else of resources, um, paper supplies, services, and, and everything else that goes along with elections. So these challenges and changes will require especially more poll workers, but a few more, uh, resources as well. So the Randolph County Elections Budget does include that pay increase for precinct officials to help find and keep enough, um, trained precinct officials and to bring their pay closer to that of surrounding and comparable counties. We always need more poll workers, um, and we have to do something to be prepared for the next several years. Um, we did just have, um, this week, our very first poll worker appreciation event, which we are very thankful to be able to do something for the folks that have been with us for many years. And I'll go ahead and plug, uh, on Jul-, on June twentieth, we are going to have a poll worker recruitment fair and have an open house, so that if anyone wants to come in and see how elections are run, um, if you know anyone who's interested, please send them our way. Safety and security of elections is also a concern we take very seriously. We're already making some changes to our office, um, for our poll workers and for the elections process to be more secure. We're also going to be partnering with some federal agencies to conduct a security audit of our operations, and we'll make any needed changes that we can. We're planning events and creating materials to increase and improve communication with and education of voters, precinct officials, candidates, elected officials, and the media. And all these efforts will help us prepare for the expected large voter turnout and the challenges that we'll have in 2024 primary and the presidential election. So thanks again for your support, for listening to us and let us talk just a little bit longer tonight. Do you have any questions?
How, how are we gonna do with voter ID?
Well, we, we, you know, we had it one election in 2016, and honestly, it went pretty smoothly. We'll have some people that don't have an ID, um, but we have ways to work around it so that they, we, we can get them to vote, but it is going to take some education. Um, this year, the new law that was, um, is being implemented, does require people who vote by mail to send in a photo ID. And I think that's probably one of the bigger challenges we'll have, is having people understand that and, and send us what we need to be able to count their ballots.
Do you have a little leeway or discretion or, or options there if they don't have a driver's license or whatever?
Well, what we have, um, is what the state law gives us, and what that will be, is there will be a form that people can fill out saying what their hardship is to not have it, and as long as it meets the state requirements. Um, and they sign it in, in good faith, and yeah, there will be an option for people to not have to send it in.
Right.
We'll have people that send us their actual ID, you know, things happen like that, but we'll make it work.
All right.
Thank you.
A quick question.
I'm sorry, yes.
On poll workers, what's the wage now that you're?
Um, so, um, we've been paying our chief judges, which is our top election day official, a hundred and fifty dollars for the day, and that's a fourteen to fifteen hour day. So we're at.
Election day, not?
On election day. So we're, we're wanting, we're, the increase is to take them to two hundred, and then the next levels are down twenty-five dollars, you know, they go down by level, um, which isn't a huge increase, but it, it's a lot of people and it makes a difference in recruiting. Some people, most people don't do it for the money, but some people want to be rewarded for the little bit that, you know, that they do, or that they can do. Um, and then, uh, early voting, um, I guess four or five years ago, we were only paying the minimum wage. We have some, a few supervisors that are going to go from ten dollars to thirteen dollars an hour, and everyone else would go from eight fifty to, I think it's eleven dollars. And again, that's really comparable with other counties our size, as well as, um, surrounding counties. It's a long day. Very short period, but a long day.
Do you count those as, as, as employees?
Anyone that works early voting is brought on as a, a, a part-time employee, and anyone election day is just, uh, they're not brought on as an employee. It's, we had about seventy-five early voting workers during 2020, 2022, and they're brought on as employees, as HR can tell you. So they only work a short time, but we, you know, they do.
So they get W two?
Pardon me?
So they get W two?
Yes, they do. Yeah. Election day workers, unless they are already a county employee, whether part-time or full-time, or the early voting workers, they're, they're just paid a flat, a flat fee.
I got you.
And paid for training. But we employ between two hundred and fifty and three hundred employees in a large election. So they make the difference. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, you're up, Kenny.
Good evening. It's hard to believe we've been here an hour and a half, two hours and a half, right? Two hours and a half. Time, time flies when we're having fun, right? Um, I want to start by, uh, sort of update, but I want to do it a little bit differently. Everybody's talking about the, how important their staff is, and how hard it is to retain, and, and how hard it is to, uh, recruit new people. Uh, and I want to, I want to do my report by talking about my staff. Uh, first, our support staff, Wanda, Chastity, and Sarah. Uh, Wanda's our most tenured employee there, she's our traffic director, she sits at the front, uh, fills all the telephone calls, and she is sorely missed when she has to be out. So we really appreciate Wanda and the work that she does at the front, uh, helping people, customers get to where they need to be. Chastity has moved into a new role in the past year or so, she's doing more with communications and media. Uh, re, uh, we have a podcast now, talking about different aspects of our work and different things that people are asking about, common questions. Uh, we've, we've had, uh, several great successes in, in doing those podcasts. And Sarah, Sarah's our, um, basically administrative assistant. Uh, she is one that interacts more with the county finance department. Um, because of her work and her skills, uh, we have a better understanding, and our staff have a better understanding of their accounts and their, what they have, uh, what's going on, and, uh, she adds a level of accountability in there as we, uh, track every penny that goes in and out, uh, there, and I really appreciate Sarah. And I also shout out to, uh, Michael and Justin Brubaker, Michael McKenzie. Um, I think the changes they've made since they've been brought on has really helped me and Sarah get a better handle of, of where we are. We're a little bit complicated because we get to send in, and we have part of our salaries coming from, from the state, uh, from universities, so it's, oh, it's, it's complex, and they have done well, learning that system and, and that, and that thing, and, and all that, so they, they're doing great, and Sarah's helped, um, account for that. Cody, uh, Cody Craddock is our horticulture agent, he is constantly answering, um, tomato questions and lawn questions and tree questions, and, um, I'm sort of envious of his job today. You know, we get a lot of questions about what weed is in my pond, right? You never thought that, right? So he was out today collecting samples of weeds, because he's about to have a workshop about what weeds grow in my pond. So, um, he was out, uh, doing that sample collection, so she, he'll have some, uh, samples to show people what this weed looks like. Um, it's very important as you maintain the health of your pond for your livestock, or, or just watering, uh, your crops and such. Adam is our livestock field, uh, so, um, agent. Um, Adam is, uh, constantly getting questions about pastures and hay, and what quality of hay we have, and, um, what's wrong with my sheep, or how, how can we, uh, improve our production of our animals? Um, this week, he's preparing for the Tri-County Livestock, Youth Livestock Camp, uh, so we're partnering with Montgomery Moore County, and having twenty or so youth come together about livestock camp. Um, so he's getting ready for that. Blake is our field crops agent. Blake, uh, is a wonderful part of our staff. Um, he just found out that he's going to be a dad, um, so we're excited about that, and his family's growing. Um, he, he, uh, he's got field trials going on all across this, the county. He's helping farmers test what crops do better, what chemicals do better, um, and he's really doing a great job doing that. Him and Cody had planned a, um, a session this past week, uh, this, a few days ago, for farmers and people that apply pesticides to get training. That's an important part of what our office does, is we help them, we help people that apply pesticides to do it safely, and, and, uh, we want them to be able to get that training. Uh, there, the room was full in the Wolfpack Room, um, last night, uh, yesterday. Jeannie Leonard is our, uh, Family and Consumer Science, she offers classes on canning and baking, and interacts with, uh, different clients on, uh, what, healthy diets, uh, med instead of meds type work. Um, tomorrow, we're having a retirement celebration for her. She is retiring after thirty years being with the state of North Carolina, so, um, she's going to be retiring at the end of the month. Uh, Sophie, who's here, back there, she's our local foods agent, she is doing a great job building the capacity within the county of people that want to grow local food, to sell at farmers' markets, but also people that want to buy the local food. Our farm market, farmers' markets are stronger since she has been around, uh, they are getting more attention, they're, uh, their hours are publicized better, uh, she's really working for that, and she's building the capacity as we move into her, uh, soon-to-be new facility, the, um, the Food Hub, uh, that's going to be in our new farm fam-, Farm Food and Family Education Center. Taylor, um, is our 4HPA Program Assistant, Taylor Wright, uh, she's back there too with Sophie. Uh, Taylor's doing an excellent job, and she is, um, uh, she, we poached her from the Randoc, Randolph County School Systems, and, uh, she is doing an excellent job, um, getting our 4H programming, uh, adding a whole complete new programming, uh, line, from what Allison does, and Allison is our 4H agent, um, and she, she and, and, um, Taylor work together, they do bike safety training, they do embryology, we appreciate the partnerships we have with the Lam-, Randolph County Libraries, we do program in the libraries. Uh, we're gearing up for summer camp, um, we have, uh, lots of children going to be participating in our summer camp program, we really appreciate the work they do. Um, so that's sort of a program update, uh, based on my people, and my people are the most important part of, of the service we offer Randolph County. Uh, as far as the budget goes, we are, um, like everybody else, we had to ask for a little bit of increase for gas expenses, gas prices keep going up, um, is impacting our bottom line. We also asked for a little bit more and received, uh, support for Sophie's position and the digital skills position. We interviewed for a digital skills position last week, we're recruiting and negotiation with that, that person that's been offered that position. Now, those positions were offer funded, it began that we absorbed those into our, um, annual budget, so that bumped our budget up a little bit. We are also, um, put in our proposed budget, uh, request for a new truck. Eric, are you listening out there? Eric gone already? Eric Beard came through last time I asked for a truck, he came up afterwards, I got one for you, but I don't know if he's got one this time. But, um, as we move forward, and one of the reasons we're asking for a truck is the, the truck that Eric, uh, provided, that year model Chevrolet truck has a, has a faulty engine in it, basically, so we're limping along, it's using a lot of oil, um, and so we're, uh, we're keeping watch on it, we're diligent about checking the oil, make sure it doesn't run low, but that engine, uh, according to Wayne Thomas Chevrolet, says that that engine is, is, is on the way out, it would, it would need to be replaced, a full replacement engine, and sometimes that doesn't go well even when you replace one. So, um, if there's room in the budget, um, we would request that we get a pickup truck, and then thinking about the use of that pickup truck down the road, um, we pull, um, it's what's called a weigh wagon, it helps farmers test their scales, uh, what they, when they harvest grains, they put the grain in this weigh wagon to make sure their combines, um, calibrated, so they'll know how many, uh, bushels per acre they're harvesting, uh, as they, uh, use their equipment. So we pull that type of thing, uh, portable corral panels, we're hoping to get, uh, at the new facility, those are heavy items, so we're asking and requesting enough money to cover like a twenty-five-hundred or two-fifty series pickup truck, just above the, the standard sized truck. So, uh, that's, that's where we are on that. One additional item that I want to bring up is, um, I talked about Taylor. Taylor is fulfilling the 4HPA position right now. I've talked to Jill, and we're working and, and seeking to reclassify that position. That position's being asked to do more than ever that has done before. There's, um, where it was more of an assistant position last time, helping just the agent, this position now does its own programming. Taylor is, uh, interacting and, and, or is required to do a lot more, um, education and, uh, research on curriculum, and interaction with, uh, different technical aspects of the job. So we're asking, and, and I don't have the exact amount, I'll get with, uh, Jill, uh, I turned in the reclassification form that I needed to, but I haven't gotten that exact number of what that reclassification amount would be, so I can get with, with Jill this week and, uh, get you that exact amount. But I am asking for that, and it's just testimony of the job that Taylor's doing, that position that we, that I'm bringing this before you today, so. Any questions?
Who is your Johnson Grass eradication?
That would be Blake. He's field crops and Johnson Grass. What I did, yeah, call Blake. What I did when I was on the farm, we had a, we had a tube with a wick on the bottom of it, it was my job and my brother's job to go walk through the field and mop it with a roundup. That was what, physically, that's what we had to do. So I don't recommend that method, there's probably new methods now, but that was what I had to do. Other questions? We'll be, um, getting an update on the Farm Food and Family Education Center, hopefully next Commissioner's meeting on July the tenth, so that's coming.
Will that have some, uh, estimates in it?
Yeah, we'll have some estimates in it, yes, sir.
Good.
Blake's number?
Yeah, give me.
I'll give you the office number, um, three-three-six, three-one-eight, six thousand.
And ask for Blake.
Ask for Blake, yes.
Max, you go online too, if you still have your computer available.
Call Blake.
He's computer anymore.
Just call Blake.
Lost his cord. I lost my cord.
We, we ain't got anything in the budget for that. Arden, don't go get him one either.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? Thank you so, for your support.
Thanks for your patience, Kenny.
Mm-hmm.
All of y'all, thank you. Okay, Brian. He's filling in for, uh, David. Yes, I'm filling in for David, y'all ain't used to seeing me up here, but I would ask for prayers for him and his family, as you pray, so remember them. Um, and I will try to be brief, I will, I will be brief. Um, we are pleased with the, uh, county manager's budget proposal, uh, but David did want me to, uh, uh, mention, like has been mentioned a couple of times before, the importance of retaining experienced employees, uh, especially, uh, our Level Three inspectors, cause as you know, Toyota's ramping up, and only Level Threes can go out there, so we need as many, we, we, if we lose anybody, we're, we're in trouble. So I just wanted to reiterate that point, so, any, any questions?
Appreciate it.
That's brief enough, isn't it?
Thank you for your patience. Robert?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'd just like to, how and the will, I'd like to thank y'all for your support. I always get supportive. We have things come up unexpected, which we do in our business. Our budget is slight increase. As y'all know, everything we do has went up, everything. Jug of gas for, a refrigerant for this unit in this building, almost five hundred dollars for twenty-five pounds. So, if it breaks a line, it takes almost three jugs to refill it, so you're looking over a thousand dollars. But I'm, I'm happy with our budget. I just would like a vehicle. We need a vehicle. We got, like Kenny said, we, we repurposed one from the Fire Marshal's probably six, seven years ago, and it's on its last leg. And one of my team members was in an accident. She got rear-ended, and her vehicle's total loss. And Jill's working on that, so we should be getting a check with that because it wasn't our fault pretty soon. Other than that, I'm happy with our budget, and I'd like to give a shout out to Jill and her, her team members because I know they've, they've been under the gun and, and I, I appreciate their presentation. Other than that, I'm good to go. We do need a vehicle.
Commissioner Kidd, I'm glad you brought up the truck because Commissioner Kidd was going to ask if you didn't have a truck, you could give to Kenny.
I do.
You'd like to, huh?
Yeah, yeah. It's a Dodge.
Less more out than a truck.
Well, it's not using oil. It's got a rust issue, but it's not using oil. We used it for our salt truck for a little while, so it's, it's got a little bit of a rust issue.
Alright.
Any questions? Thank y'all.
I think we're good. Public Works, action.
Good evening. I'll be brief. Public Works Budget has not changed much from last year. I increased revenue for a, a few items for the state sales tax, or solid waste taxes and for the cell tower rent. Other than that, it's the same as last year. I'm happy with the proposed budget, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Alright. We got another busy year coming.
Yeah.
Comments?
Hopefully, we'll wrap up the jail soon though.
Alright. Thank you, Patrick.
Thanks.
It's been a busy year. Thank you much. Okay, Will.
He's, he's the one we've been looking for all the time.
Administration Budget, before I get into that, you've heard Michael McKenzie's name mentioned a couple of times, but he's my employee, so I get to mention him too. He's filled the position of Reporting Specialist that you had at last July. He's also provided a lot of technical assistance during the budget process, and I just appreciate that. The Administration Budget has two things in it. One is the Strategic Program Coordinator position, and that will provide a lot of valuable technical assistance to departments here in the county, things we haven't been able to do in the past. And the other thing I would just mention in the Administration Budget, insurance costs have gone up. We've talked a lot about inflation and different things, but that, that's had an effect on repairs to vehicles if they're damaged. It's, you know, if you have to rebuild the building or fix damages, it's affected that too. The insurance industry globally lost like twenty-some billion dollars last year. So, the whole marketplace has just gone crazy, and they have reduced the coverages in a lot of areas because they just don't want to take on that risk. We have participation in the Association of County Commissioners Risk Group. So, worker, workers' comp is going really well, but the propping liability went up about fifteen percent. So, we, we have that budgeted, so that's the big increase in our operating costs.
Will, is the increase, is that due to storms? I know-
Globally, globally, you're talking, well, right now, you've got the Canadian forest fires, but you have the ones that were in California too. In California, from what I understand, you know, State Farm is not even picking up any new residential policies because they've assessed their risk and they say they don't want to take them. So, it's just, it's kind of strange out there right now. But, you know, we're covered. I think we have a really good plan with the Association of County Commissioners.
Alright. Anything else tonight, Commissioners? We do meet again Monday night, and that will be public hearing also on the budget at six-thirty. Our agents, agencies in the fire districts will be here also at six-thirty. Following Monday, we will hopefully be able to adopt our budget. Thank all of you for being here tonight, for your patience, and we still have a ways to go, but thank you for being a part of this process. Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank y'all.